I'm Assemblymember Deborah Glick, Chair of the Assembly Committee on Environmental Conservation. I welcome you to the hearing on the Packaging Waste Reduction or the Extended Producer Responsibility, depending on what's in your brain this week. So, thank you very much for being here. We are -- this hearing is about figuring out the best legislative responses to concerns that may be had. We think we have a great bill, Senator and I, and we -- but we -- and we have talked to many people, but we're here to hear different viewpoints and different perspectives and to understand whether there are some issues that we haven't addressed or to remind people that we, in fact, have addressed them. And for those who are not testifying but have something to say, you can send your comments by email or mail to the address that was on the hearing notice within 10 days, and it will be added to the record. Just a reminder about the process. Please, everybody, silence your cell phone. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. The countdown buttons, lights, will tell you green is go. You have a minute when the yellow light goes on, and when the red light goes on, please stop. And that goes for our questioning and answering on our side. It's probably best for people who are testifying to just summarize what you have to say and not read a full testimony. We have that in writing. And we would like to remind everybody that the chairs and the rankers will have five minutes for questioning. That's question and answer. And other members will have three minutes. We'll introduce our respective members. We'll make some opening comments, and then we will proceed with the testimony from the witnesses. I am very excited about the fact that we are going to be discussing waste and how to reduce it. It's a problem everywhere. It is a problem in our homes. It's a problem in our communities. It's costing us a lot, and we -- if I'm looking through the folks in front of me, younger people, our kids, are telling us that we have to do a better job because the world that we are giving them is not something that's sustainable. And they intend to see that we take action and take action promptly. So with that, I will turn it over to my wonderful co-chair for the day and the Senate sponsor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Great to be with you this morning. I'm glad you're awake. I'm not quite awake yet, but we will get there. And thank you for your partnership, both as committee chair and also on this bill. Good morning, everybody. Great to be here. Just quickly, I'm State Senator Pete Harkam, Chair of the Senate Environmental Conservation Committee. Joining me from the Senate side is Senator Michelle Hinchey, Senator Steck, our ranking member, and Senator Kansaneri Patrick. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. As Chair Glick mentioned, this is day two of the Waste Reduction Tour. Yesterday, we talked about the Bottle Bill, and today, we're talking about the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act. And this is really important in context of New York State's climate goals. Number one, it's front and center in the Climate Action Plan, both from a methane and a CO2 perspective, minerals extraction, trucking, landfills, incredibly important. And it's also costing our taxpayers, our municipalities, and the ratepayers who pay directly to carters, to cart all this waste away. So the bill that we have crafted together and now is on the A-print, you know, aims to do four things: reduce packaging, improve the recycling and recycling infrastructure, financially support municipal recycling programs, and reduce toxins in packaging. As Chair Glick mentioned, last year, with the first version of the bill, we jointly met with scores of stakeholders. We're still meeting with stakeholders. We're now doing a public hearing to hear from stakeholders. We will continue to meet with stakeholders. But we did make some accommodations in the version of the bill that we -- what was it, May or June? End of May, that we came out with the A-print, and we added flexibility, flexibility in rates and dates, flexibility in the percent of recycled content. In both cases, appeals can be made to the DEC conditioner, reuse and refill incentives for waivers, a five-year look back, because many of the companies who came to us already have sustainability programs and are beginning to do this work. So we put a five-year look back in. And then for the food producers and the farmers, we put an FDA federal preemption, made it very clear that nothing in this law preempts federal FDA packaging food safety requirements. So we're still taking testimony. We're looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. And with that, I will turn it back to Chair Glick.
Thank you very much. I would just like to introduce our members on our side. From the Assembly, we have my ranking member -- I will acknowledge my ranking member, Matt Simpson, and members from the far left. Don't have a heart attack, Assemblymember Smolin. I'm going in order of direction from me. Assemblymember Smolin, Simpson, Manktalo, Otis, and Epstein. So I am very grateful for their participation. We know that it's always -- our lives are busy and the fall, but we felt that this was a critical issue and something that we had to give an opportunity for there to be a public hearing so that, again, people would know that we were here to listen to concerns or recommendations or changes that are perhaps something that we might have overlooked, though we don't think we did. Thank you very much. And with that, we will take the first witness. This looks like Groundhog Day. We have, starting off again today, David Vitale, the Acting Deputy Commissioner of the -- from DEC, the Office of Remediation and Materials Management. Thank you for being here again.
Good morning, Chair Glick and Chair Harkam. Members of the Senate and Assembly Standing Committees on Environmental Conservation, I'm David Vitale. I'm the Acting Deputy Commissioner for the Office of Remediation and Materials Management. Yep. On behalf of Commissioner Segos, who couldn't be here today, I thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on packaging and paper products reduction. More than 7 million tons of paper and packaging are generated annually in New York State, accounting for about 40% of the municipal solid waste stream. Statewide MSW recycling rate has remained about 20% for many years. Consequently, much of it ends up in landfills and combustors, contributing to greenhouse gas emissions. The waste sector accounts for an estimated 12% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. More than three-quarters of those emissions come from decomposition of organic materials, including paper, in landfills. EPR for packaging and paper products has effectively been in place throughout the European Union and Canadian provinces, among others. Nationally, four states have passed forms of packaging and paper EPR legislation. To proactively prepare for implementation of Packaging and Paper Products EPR program, DEC has funded the Center for Sustainable Materials Management, ESF, to conduct an initial needs assessment and gap analysis of existing collection and recycling systems for packaging and paper across New York State. From '93 through 2020, DEC has invested over $250 million in grant funding for municipal waste reduction recycling programs, which has supported well over 2,200 projects. EPR legislation has been advanced in both houses with multiple sessions, and the concept has been put forth in an executive budget in the last two budget cycles. However, no EPR has passed. The Governor's 2022 proposal would have provided direct financial relief for municipal, residential, commercial, and institutional costs. Key elements included both packaging and paper products, ensuring convenient recycling is provided for all residential, commercial, and institutional sectors, establishing minimum consumer convenience standards, setting targets for post-consumer recycled content, requiring producers to conduct public outreach and education, excluding burning of waste of fuel from being considered recycling, and establishing a mechanism to adequately fund DEC's oversight and enforcement. Enacting an aggressive, achievable, and transparent EPR proposal would increase recycling rates, increase investments in developing more eco-friendly materials, and benefit New York's economy. However, if we want to make a transformational difference in how we manage waste, we must be bold and adopt a broad and inclusive EPR law that includes all the elements in the Governor's most recent proposal. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss this critical topic, and I look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Before I begin my questions, we've been joined by Senator Brian Kavanaugh. Welcome. Good to see you, sir. Thank you for your testimony, day two. Good to see you again. I'm glad to hear you and the Governor talking about bold action. I think, you know, we're all rowing in the same direction. I think the difference between Chair Glick and my proposal from the Governors is I think ours is more aggressive than the Governor's. So we look forward to those discussions and how we can jointly and collaboratively move this forward because it's key. One of the things that, whether it's the Governor's plan or our plan, is going to require more DEC staff. So when -- I don't want to ask you about next year's budget because yesterday you said you couldn't answer that at this point in time. How many more staff members does DEC need to adequately implement and oversee an EPR program, whether it's our bill, the Governor's bill? We know we're going to need more staff. How many more at the bottom level and at the top level?
Well, it's different depending on which proposal. Governor's proposal, we projected eight staff that we needed. The last proposal that we had seen that had responsibilities for the department to manage the PRO or take over the program if they weren't able to contract for that work would have been 62.
All right. I think we still envision a robust PRO. You know, our model really, in some ways, is predicated on the Climate Action Task Force, where we had a group largely of civilians, non-government employees, making recommendations, and then it was ultimately DEC and ICERTA and the Governor making the approval. And that's very similar to the model that we have laid out. We do envision a robust PRO, but it's the state's responsibility to oversee waste management. And I think that's a difference that we're coming at. One of the things that was in the draft waste assessment is perhaps a recommendation for an increased tipping fee, and it seems counter to what we want to try to do if we're trying to reduce costs to municipalities and to homeowners and to ratepayers who paid directly. So how do we reconcile that?
Well, that was a disposal disincentive surcharge. And so what the intent was, you add additional cost to disposal, that, one, would lead to incentive to dispose of less material, because it costs a little bit more to dispose of it. And then a very key component of that would be to take that money that comes in from all of that waste, and that's the entire waste stream, including construction and demolition debris, material that's imported, material exported. You take that aggregate amount and then redistribute it to municipalities to invest into their recycling programs. So it's a huge infusion of cash to municipalities and their programs. So it had a dual benefit for that.
But there's no benefit -- there is no incentive to actually reduce packaging and to--
Well, the packaging would be done through the EPR portion. This would be a complementary piece.
All right. I think that's all I have. Madam Chair.
Again, thank you for being here and being so on the button. I just want to highlight the fact that you were on the exact moment of three minutes. So kudos to you again. In terms of figuring out the needs assessment that's ongoing, does it include a review of farm-related waste, and is there a timeframe for completion of a needs assessment?
Did you say farm-related waste?
Yes.
Yeah. No, it focuses on residential, commercial, and institutional waste, not the agricultural side of waste.
Have you all had any conversations with ag and markets to have a conversation around that?
There -- no, there hasn't been discussion related to the farm waste itself. If it's a producer, like agricultural, like food, that is incorporated, that's sold to market, and then it goes into -- that's part of the MSW stream. The material like manure, those kinds of management materials and agricultural, those are not considered part of municipal solid waste, and those are not part of this assessment. So maybe we're splitting hairs on what's agricultural. That's part of the challenges we think we have sometimes with definitions of what people are -- think are included in different pieces.
We should, by the way, reset the clock when one member concludes. So let me just take a couple of moments more, because I know I was just finishing up your Yesterday, you were talking about how both the Bottle Bill and the EPR needed to go together. Do you see them as actually -- did you -- do you see part of that Bottle Bill being part of EPR, or do you think that they just complement each other?
I think they complement each other. The Governor's proposal, as long as they was in the Bottle Bill, it was already -- it was out of the EPR side of it. And so considering them together makes a lot of sense to us when you move forward in building out both laws. We didn't have the EPR law before. All we had was Bottle Bill. So the thoughts were, add things into that. If you have EPR, it gives you the opportunity, it gives you more tools to evaluate which side does it belong in, which the best process. You had asked about the EPR date or the needs assessment date. The target is for the initial needs assessment is May 24.
Great, great. Thank you. Currently, does DEC review packaging to determine if there are toxic materials that are in violation of law now?
I guess I'm not understanding that one. I'm sorry.
We have a list of materials that are toxins that are not permitted in current law. Are you -- does DEC review packaging to determine whether or not there are toxins in packaging right now?
Well, there's a number of toxic laws that we're implementing. We have one form in household cleaning products that we're doing. We're doing toxins in children's products. We're doing PFAS in apparel, PFAS in food packaging. So there's a bunch of laws that we're implementing now. Part of that will include testing, but they're not -- we haven't developed regulations yet. We haven't implemented all of those laws yet.
What is the -- we envision a separate PRO. How do you see DEC's role in the oversight of the PRO?
Well, it depends on the different bills and our interpretation of them. One, the Governor had proposed, the oversight would be the manufacturers create, sign up for PRO. There's a PRO, and the department, we have to approve their plans, and we have to make sure that they adhere to the plans. So it's the department's complete oversight of those PRO. The way we interpret the last proposal, it had the department issuing the contract for the PRO, which we're actually concerned that we can even legally do some of those things that are required of a PRO, that we could actually contract for something like that as an agency. And then if we were unable to contract with somebody, it says the department had to take that role on. So then it would be a very different role for us in that.
Thank you.
Senator Steck?
Good to talk -- Can you hear me now? All right. Good morning. Thanks, Commissioner, for being here again today. A couple of quick questions. What is the total cost shift for residential and commercial recycling of packaging materials from municipalities and private carriers onto producers? What is that total dollar amount we're talking about?
It would be -- I don't have a full dollar amount for the entire state. There's been estimates for New York City alone, savings of $150 to $400 million, depending on whose estimate is included in that. The cost is, I had indicated in our testimony, that's $250 million we've invested just through grants. That's only 50%. Municipalities pay that other 250%. So that's at least another 250, plus eligible or ineligible costs in our grant program. And then there's the whole municipal or private collection side. Actually, the municipalities, most municipalities don't even collect the waste and process the recyclables. New York City has a significant program in it, and that skews our numbers. We're about 60% residential because of that. You take out New York City, where about 30% is collected and processed by municipalities. So all that other cost is done by privates, and that's not even eligible for cost. So that's kind of the magnitude that we're looking at, but I don't have an exact dollar amount.
Understood. But if I heard you correctly, you started with a number, a ballpark range for New York City that was just for New York City and that didn't factor in upstate or the private. So is it safe to say that the number that we're looking at is in the order of about $1 billion?
At least that.
Okay. SUNY ESF is in the process of doing a statewide needs assessment and gap analysis for New York's recycling system. Do you know, are you aware of the timeline of that completion, and would it make any sense to benefit our program from, you know, the fruit of their labor?
The target for the initial needs assessment is May 2024, but this is going to be one of these things that continue. There's always going to be another piece to evaluate, and we should do it frequently to make sure that we stay up with it. So could it benefit? Yes, it's going to benefit. It's going to benefit whether we do the needs, whether EPR passes or not. We need to look at the system and make opportunities for improvement. So yes, it certainly will benefit, but the moving forward on EPR isn't predicated on that.
Okay. And last question, does DEC intend to roll out residential and commercial recycling of packaging simultaneously, or one before the other, or would this be all rolled out at the same time?
The disposal disincentives, is that what you're talking about?
The implementation of the recycling for both, for packaging, for both residential and commercial?
Yes.
They'll go simultaneously?
Yes, that's the proposal.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
First, let me say that we've been joined in the audience by Assemblymember Septimo. Very happy to have you here today. And our first member who will question will be Brian Manktalo.
Thank you, Commissioner, for coming in again today. In the second paragraph of your testimony, you're talking about a shift of responsibilities, a shift from local governments, residents, businesses, and institutions by dramatically reducing their waste and their footprint of making this all happen. And it's going to be a cost shift. It's going to be a cost shift back to the producers and the paper product producers as well. In business, I see that the packaging and the paper product producers will probably have an added cost because now they're going to have to deal with the products, the waste products coming back in, or however that works. So it's really going to be a cost shift. I'm not sure that it's going to save residents and businesses a ton of money. I hope it does, but I'm just concerned about that cost. My other part of my question, though, to you is, in that same paragraph, you're talking about ensuring the existence of a reliable market or reliable markets. By doing this cost shift, how are we going to come up with reliable markets that we don't already have? And how do you, how does DEC plan on helping that come to fruition?
Well, the concept with the markets and why it helps stabilize markets is, the more consistent we get with what we collect across the state and in various programs, so as consistent as we can be, it makes it easier to aggregate that material. If it's done instead of by individual planning units and municipalities across the state trying to market themselves, and it's done in a more aggregated way where we can amass the amount of material to draw in those markets, to build whatever facilities we need to process those materials, now there's that incentive there, that ability to supply those. So you draw in the markets to build because they'll have a clean and consistent type of stream for those various commodities. That's done through this aggregation process. So having a PRO take that responsibility and ensure that those markets are fed provides stability to those markets and consistency. It doesn't mean the dollar amount is going to be the same for paper every single day. It still has to market, but it gives so much more control with a powerful amount of material.
Because I think with the shift here, I think the markets, as I asked yesterday about marketing, it's a huge part of it, because we used to run a county MRF back home, and the marketing part was just as important as everything else, because without the marketing part in place, the rest of it really doesn't matter. Unfortunately, some of that ended up in landfills. So I'm really interested to see how we can help these producers make that happen. And thank you for your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'll now hear from Assemblymember Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. How do you envision, or what changes do you envision in municipal transfer stations with the changes between, if the Bottle Bill is enacted and expanded as well as EPR? And the second part of that would be, how will DEC or the state participate in funding those changes to those municipalities that, you know, they have a system established now?
Well, what we envision is the municipalities will have the opportunity to continue if they're currently collecting, because not all municipalities do. But if the municipalities are currently collecting materials and processing the materials, that would now be funded by the PRO through the producers. So nothing has to change if their system is providing the materials that the PRO needs. It may need improvements in the system, which would be funded by the PRO. They also could choose not to do that anymore. It could be done through privates, and the privates are funded through the PROs. So any adjustments that are necessary through a recovery facility or a transfer facility to move recyclables through would be funded through that PRO. So DEC wouldn't envision having to provide any of that funding because it would be done through the PRO.
In the planning for the needs assessment and, you know, the overall, you know, application of this legislation, did you look at small municipalities in the Adirondacks where, you know, they're not, they're far vastly different than most municipal reclamation, you know, where you're bringing this product in? And, you know, very small communities, 1400 people.
Yes. It's, that's an important point to us, because we talk about this all the time. That waste is very, it's different, not the way That waste is very, it's different, not the waste itself, but how it's collected and how it's processed and where it goes, and very different depending where you are in the state. Wherever you are, you think your waste, everybody else's waste is collected exactly the same way you are, and it is not. It is very different in a more rural area than in Long Island, than in New York City, than a lower Hudson Valley. Each one has their unique characteristics. So yes, we'd have, it's important, it's part of the needs assessment, it's part of our state planning. We put lots of effort into showing the differences in that. It's very different depending where you are. So it's an important component, yes.
Thank you. I'm glad you did. It's, you know, I was a county supervisor and a town supervisor, and we saw the differences between even counties and, you know, how much more is expensive than one county over another because of the distances, you know, the hauling fees and, you know, trying to find people that will transfer this product.
And at times municipalities within counties are different as well.
Thank you.
Senator Kinsinger Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here again. I know you were here yesterday as well. I appreciate you being here and taking the time. I had a question. I believe you said that there was an estimate of about 62 additional employees that would be needed at the D E C level, and I'm trying to determine, are those additional employees needed to supervise the PROs that are being in place, or is that if a PRO is not in place?
It's, the difference between the eight and the governor's proposal and the 62 is predominantly related to having to manage that PRO. And so it's either the contracting portions of it and then the monitoring of that contracting, even if it is possible. And if it's not, the department would have to perform those services. And so that's where the predominant amount is, but not all of it. Some will be some legal and enforcement side as well. And then there's a proposal, part of the proposal there is for an inspector of recycling, inspector general as well, so there would be extra staff related to that within the department as well to oversee the department.
So do you think it's more efficient if we use D E C employees solely, or is it better to have this combination with the PROs and the D E C staff that's supervising them?
We believe the governor's proposal is the most efficient and appropriate. It has the PRO responsibilities, and they administer all of those components, and the department oversees them.
And how many PROs do we, is the estimate that we would need statewide for this program?
How many?
PRO entities?
Well, one of the things we've learned from some of the states that have put it in, they suggest very strongly to try to have as few as possible. So one would be preferable, because it has as much impact as possible. It's easier to manage for them. It's easier for them to distribute the costs across all of those producers, and it's much easier for us to monitor them as well.
Okay. As a former village trustee in a very small village on Long Island, as my colleague said, I think we have to consider the various levels of government that are, in fact, recycling, how they handle their programs so that we can avoid burdening them with fiscal, you know, challenges in order to implement the program, because I think you have so much different, so many different programs throughout the state. So that'll be a challenge for the D E C to implement, I would think.
Absolutely. We agree with you completely.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
We have been joined by Assemblymember Durso, and now we will hear from Assemblymember Epstein.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, we talked a little bit yesterday about enforcement and figuring out how we can ensure enforcement will be happening. What additional resources, if we did an EPR, would D E C need to use for advanced enforcement to make sure that people are complying with the EPR standards and kind of the potential options? We've heard yesterday a lot around lack of enforcement around the Bottle Bill, and I'm worried that if we do it in a new EPR, we won't have the resources necessary to ensure there's enforcement around the state.
Well, our projection was eight staff members would be able to monitor the, to set up the program and monitor the PRO. We do have additional existing enforcement staff, and so some of that could be used for that as well. But a key component of the governor's proposal was the requirement, a funding mechanism for the PRO to provide funding to the department as needed in order to implement the program. So if it turns out that we were incorrect and eight isn't enough, and we have to have, add four more enforcement staff, because we have a struggle with a component as we're implementing it, we have that ability to receive that funding from that PRO to provide that additional resources. So that's how it's structured.
So I understand your point about feeling like eight staff might be enough, but we heard a lot yesterday around the lack of ability of D E C to do adequate enforcement today. And so eight staff is to deal with the more responsibility the D E C is going to be put under, under an EPR, whether our bill or your bill. So I'm wondering if we're still going to be under resourced to do enforcement, and then are we still going to have ongoing problems with ensuring there's compliance?
Well, there's always those possibilities, but one of the important components is having that ability to provide that funding to the department, to provide the adequate administration and enforcement, where we don't have that provision in the Bottle Bill law, and we don't have that ability to draw on that. It has to come from the broader resources that we have within the department. So this is targeted to provide additional resources if necessary.
And what percentage of the waste do you think is commercially driven versus residentially driven?
It's, the difference is, and this gets into some of those definitions, municipal solid waste is really, when we talk about it and we use all those percentages, is residential, commercial, and institutional waste. That's municipal solid waste. Residential waste comprises about 54% of that, so about 46% is the commercial side. So roughly 50/50. If you have a residential-only target, you cut 50% of the material out right from the beginning. So if we think that there's 40% of packaging and paper, if you're only doing residential, your initial target is now 20, because you've already cut 50% off. And so that's, it's an important component to us. And some of that could just be definitions and how people interpret what's happening. Some of it is that what happens in my, in my world or my part of the state or wherever I live, I think is everywhere. And I know my local nomenclature, it isn't necessarily how it really applies across the whole state. So that's the important piece in why we keep saying that.
And thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Next, we'll hear from Assemblymember Smollett.
Well, good morning again, Mr. Vitale. Thanks again for coming back to testify. This is the other side of the coin from the Bottle Bill yesterday, EPR. And I just wanted to go back to what I had spoke about yesterday about cost-benefit analysis and what's been done in terms of research and studies. You know, D E C has put a very strong position out here on behalf of the Commissioner and the Governor in support of EPR in this way to address the waste stream. But what I'm afraid is not happening is that we're not addressing the entire process holistically from across the state. As you just mentioned, there are different regions, different areas of the states. The needs of New York City are different than the needs of the suburbs around New York City, which are different from some of the counties and upstate, which are much more rural and spread out. We'd mentioned yesterday about 20 million going for studying. Is the SUNY ESF study, is that going to be definitive for New York's solid waste stream as it's been defined in this EPR bill?
The $20 million is for many, many projects across four different universities. The needs assessment is only one small piece, about $280,000, $90,000 at this point in time, for the initial analysis for the needs assessment. That is part of ESF. Projected further analysis as part of this further needs assessment that will be going out for bid is probably about a million. So it'll be about a million, two or so combined for this assessment.
Sure. Well, thank you for that. I simply urge the state as a whole to make sure that we have all the factors to take into account, because I know in other aspects of the, you mentioned the climate leadership in the Community Protection Act, the cost-benefit analysis has been wholly inadequate, in my view. And in particular, one area is, is having to do with the waste stream from renewable energies. Will they be covered under some sort of EPR-like scheme where it's actually going to capture those costs and so we know what we're actually getting into with these climate, different aspects of the climate leadership in the Community Protection Act, which are, you know, the draft scoping plan doesn't seem to cover all these things.
The object of the needs assessment is to do that analysis, to look at the differences across the state from a small village in Long Island versus a more rural area, trying to figure out where are the gaps, where are the holes for consistency in implementing a program, a broad program like this, and what are the costs? What would the costs be to improve whatever infrastructure is necessary in order to bring the consistency across the state? Those costs, then, would be borne by the PRO on behalf of the producers.
That seems to be really important, and I don't think we're there yet. I think we have a lot of work to do across the entire state, whether it's the executive or the legislature. It's really important, and I urge much more deliberate action in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Assemblymember Septimo.
Thank you for being here and for your time. So I just have two particular questions. First, I think we're all interested in making sure that good policy is crafted here and that innovation is really at the center of it. I'm curious as to why we wouldn't consider allowing all plastics to be recycled if there are environmental safeguards in place, specifically thinking about the process of gasification and the fact that it's not included in the sort of allowable outputs definition.
I'm sorry, I'm having a real hard time hearing you.
Sure. Sorry about that. Is that better? Okay. So wanting to make sure that we're crafting good policy and that innovation's at the heart of it, curious as to why we wouldn't be exploring allowing all plastics to be recycled if there are environmental safeguards in place, and thinking specifically, one example is the process of gasification, why that's not being included in the sort of allowable outputs definition. I would just love you to elaborate on that if you can.
I don't know. I must be going deaf or something. I'm sorry. I really had a hard time hearing the end of that. Is there a way we can give her three more minutes so I can hear that?
Yeah, so I will be shorter than maybe, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. So wondering, just in terms of wanting to drive toward innovation, is there a reason why we wouldn't allow all plastics to be recycled if there are environmental safeguards in place? One example, thinking about the process of gasification, why that's not included in a definition in terms of allowable outputs?
Well, we think, we certainly want all plastics to be recycled. We want all material to be recovered, to be used beneficially in some way. It's a matter of what you decide, what you include as being part of a recycling definition to count toward the components of an EPR program or post-consumer requirements. And so if there's some components like combustion and recovery of materials through that, that's not something that we have ever considered recycling in the state.
Okay.
It doesn't mean it's not, it's not something that's a positive
Worth one.
in the hierarchy of waste management. Combustion is in there. It's better than landfilling in the hierarchy that's set in the law. So it doesn't mean it can't happen. It's just what you count toward, which category.
Great. So to that end, I would love us to really be as expansive as we can in terms of considering the different outputs. I think gasification is really important, because it's a process that would allow plastic that would otherwise end up in a landfill to be recycled, so want that to really be considered. Now, switching gears entirely, I'm wondering if there have been any studies on how practical these reuse and refill models will be in urban settings and particularly different types of communities. So single-parent households, low-income communities, folks who are reliant on public transit, et cetera. Has there been any sort of formal looking at how this will impact different communities in that way?
For reusables, is that what you said? We have, actually, in our state solid waste management plan, we have a draft state solid waste management plan. We have dozens of initiatives related to reuse. We haven't done a specific study for what's the applicability, what's the participation in an urban area versus a rural area. There's activities going on. We know it's a positive. It's one of those metrics that haven't been fully evaluated by the state. It's one of the pieces, the reduction in the reuse side has been a challenge with metrics for us. And so we focused on recycling rates. That's why we have shifted our metric 10 years ago in our state plan to disposal, and that's what we looked at, reducing disposal, because that we could measure. And so did it really matter if it came from reuse, recycling, or reduction? Well, it does matter as you get through and try to implement the programs. And so that's why we have dozens of initiatives in that plan.
Well, thank you so much. I just want to underscore that as we move forward and try to green our state and our economy, and especially our disposal process, that we want to be prioritizing frontline communities like those. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Otis.
Thank you for your very knowledgeable testimony. You've been great on both days. So the comments from the Chair complimenting you at the beginning, I think we all feel that way. Question about the staffing levels, because there's a variety of views about what staffing levels at D E C are going to be adequate. So I think it comes down to maybe a vision, if you're indicating six to eight people is enough, what's the vision of what those people are going to be doing compared to maybe, given the expansion of oversight that is maybe necessary here, what more people would do, or, and I do appreciate and agree with you not to farm this out, the PRO thing, I think that is the wise judgment. But could you go into a little more detail about how we can get by with the numbers that you gave and why it wouldn't be better to have more staffing added for these purposes?
Well, it's always nice to have more staff, but what the governor's proposal, we had projected that we would need eight to initiate the program, so there's draft of regulations, build out all that front-end part, and review plans from the producer responsibility organizations, and then enforce those plans. So we have experience through the EPR laws for e-waste, batteries, thermostats, and so we have a feel on how much time it takes to review plans. This will be much more massive. It'll be much more involved. And so our analysis was that we could do it with eight to initiate it. And then, again, we have that provision that if we needed more, if we were wrong, we could add additional staff as necessary, paid for by the producer responsibility organization. The difference with the other proposal was that it required the department to do the contracting for the PRO and try to do that. And again, if, assuming legally we could even do that, that is a significant undertaking. And then administering that contract and the deliverables in each of those contracts and the payments related to those, it's a huge undertaking. And then the enforcement related to that contract. And then the proposal for that inspector general within the department to oversee the department, those costs would be added in there as well. And so that's really the difference. And if that, and if we couldn't contract, it says we have to do the PRO. We have to, so that adds more layers of could we even legally do such a thing? And it's, that's the difference. That's why it's eightfold.
You know, my sense is at the back end, we're going to need more staff to oversee this once it's set up, but really appreciate your knowledge on all of the stuff. You've been excellent with this.
All right. Thank you. I'm just coming back for a bonus round. Want to clarify something you said to Chair Glick and to Assemblymember Otis about the contracting. So if I'm not mistaken, you answered Chair Glick's question by saying you did not think D E C could legally contract with the PRO. So how are you going to oversee this organization if you cannot do a contract with them? So how are you going to oversee this organization if you cannot do a contract with them?
Under the proposal we saw, it says that we're supposed to contract. Some of the things that we would be contracting for are things that we can't provide service. We can't provide collection service. We can't provide money to private businesses through our agency. So to do it through a contract, maybe, that's for the attorneys to figure out if there's a legal path through something like that.
So you're talking about the individual task contracts versus contracting with a PRO to come up with the program?
Yes, the PRO has to implement the program, so they would have to invest money wherever the weaknesses are.
Right, but what I'm saying is in order to oversee them, don't you have to do a contract with them?
In the governor's proposal, what the object is, is we don't do a contract. The contracts are with the manufacturers. The PRO represents the manufacturers. All of that is within, for them. They calculate the dollar amounts, they calculate the eco-modulation based on which products are more recyclable or not. We oversee it. So they submit the plans, we approve the plans. If we don't approve the plans, they don't.
So under the governor's plan, you're saying this is a, in a sense, a voluntary organization, that we're ceding a big chunk of our enforcement oversight and allowing this organization to subsume a big chunk of New York's economy without a contract almost on a voluntary basis?
Well, it wouldn't be on a voluntary basis.
I don't mean to be flip. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be flip. I'm just trying to understand.
Again, we don't believe it would be a voluntary basis because it's a requirement in the law for them, for the manufacturers, to have a producer responsibility, a producer responsibility organization represent them and perform those functions for them. So it's not really voluntary.
But in your regulations, you wouldn't, as a state agency, like to this massive organization that we're all talking about, you wouldn't want to do a contract with them?
We don't do contracts with them. It's like, we don't do that with the e-waste program. They have responsibilities to those manufacturers. Their responsibility to us and our oversight of them, we have full enforcement oversight over them. We have full, we're not ceding enforcement to them in any way, shape, or form. They have responsibility for implementing the program on behalf of them. They have the responsibility to hit those targets in that law. It's our responsibility to monitor them and make sure they do. And if they don't, that's when we have to take enforcement action against that to ensure that happens. So they're an entity regulated by us, essentially, no different than a facility, any other facilities that we regulate. They're regulated by us as an entity. They have a service responsibility to those producers.
I hear you. I guess my point is, and I'll leave it here, we do contracts with organizations all over the state to do things for us, and I think our perspective is, is that if we're asking someone to do something on this magnitude, we might want to have a contract with them. But that's something we can discuss more, we're not going to solve here, it's just a difference of philosophy.
Yeah, we look forward to discussing any of these. You know, we're an open book, any information we have, we just want to get to the right spot.
Right, and we're all rowing in the right direction, so same direction, I should say. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We've been joined by Assemblymember Giglio, and I think we are going to need a further understanding. I think we both made the same note about the contract issue. So I think that's something that you can maybe get back to us about.
Sure.
Why this is different than any number of other agencies contracting with outside organizations to perform certain functions, including things that might collect dollars or disperse them. So I just think we need a better understanding of that.
Sure.
And we want to thank you for your responsiveness and all of your knowledge. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Great to see you.
The next panel will be from the City of New York, Antonio Whitaker, the Assistant Director of Community Affairs from New York City Department of Sanitation. When you begin, if it's, it is in your, you're going to be giving testimony on behalf of Mr. Marolo?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So just state your name for the record and then proceed.
Of course. Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Antonio Whitaker. I am the Assistant Director of the Bureau of Community Affairs for the New York City Department of Transportation, and I will be presenting testimony on behalf of Deputy Commissioner Ryan Marola, the Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs for the department. Good morning, Chairs Harkman and Glick. My name is Antonio Whitaker, and I'll be presenting testimony on behalf of the City of New York and DSNY in support of S. 4246 and A. 5322 to reduce waste from packaging and paper products and increase the diversion of waste from landfills. These bills would create a statewide extended producer responsibility program for packaging and printed paper products. This program would shift some responsibility for end-of-life recycling or disposal of such products, which make up more than 30% of New York City's waste stream, to their manufacturers and sellers. New York City currently spends more than $150 million per year in direct costs to collect and process recyclables. This bill will provide substantial revenue for New York City and for municipalities and counties around the state to defray these costs and support ongoing recycling collection and waste diversion efforts. These policies are critical to achieving the state's climate goals under the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. With the largest municipal waste collection and disposal department in the state, the city serves approximately 8.8 million residents and collects more than 3.5 million tons of waste and recyclables annually. Residents sort traditional recyclables and place them curbside for DSNY pickup. Over the last several years, the city has also implemented new programs and expanded services for non-curbside collecting materials. Since the inception of the city's mandatory recycling law in 1989, recycling has been and continues to be a fundamental pillar of DSNY's operations, policies, and solid waste management strategy to reduce the city's carbon footprint. The city recognizes the immense benefits of recycling and the opportunities it brings to communities in the forms of sustainability and jobs. The city plays only one role in a larger supply chain needed to achieve successful recycling and waste diversion. In recent years, changes to packaging manufacturing, including the increased use of non-recyclable multi-layered products and single-use plastic packaging, combined with global market trends affecting the value of recycled commodities, have created substantial financial and operational challenges for agencies responsible for the recycling and disposal of packaging products and have highlighted the need for comprehensive action, which these bills would deliver. The framework enacted by these bills will require that the upstream manufacturers and retailers of packaging.
Sir, if you could summarize, perhaps just go to the end of your testimony.
Absolutely, ma'am, absolutely. The city would like to note one important change to proposed bills that would allow for further innovation in the recycling industry and in years and decades to come. The definition of recycling in these bills currently excludes all forms of chemical recycling. While the city agrees that chemical recycling is a nascent market that deserves great scrutiny, the city believes that the final bill should include a regulatory approach to chemical recycling that will allow proven and tested forms of chemical recycling. Those that have been shown to create new products and not just energy to be considered as recycling for the purposes of the EPR program. The city recommends language similar to that included in the governor's proposal or that included in the proposals sponsored last year by Senator Kaminsky. Because the city has long been a leader in efforts to reduce, reuse, and recycle its waste for all of the above stated reasons, the city strongly supports S. 4246 and A. 5322 with the addendum of the change reflected above. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand that you are not the person who is primarily in charge of the recycling. Let me just, for a moment, divert to say that we have been joined by Assemblymember Fahey. So I will just ask you, if the city, if the bill did not make any change that the city is indicating now they would like us to consider around chemical recycling, would the city still support these measures?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for stepping in at the last minute, taking one for the team. Couple quick questions. So as we've discussed, one of the focuses of the bill is to take the onus of all this waste collection off of taxpayers and put it on the producers who have produced the new multi-dimensional packaging you've spoken about. Do you have any idea how much your sanitation budget has increased over the last several years because of the increase in packaging or more challenging forms of packaging?
Well, as I had mentioned in my testimony, Senator, that the city spends more than $150 million per year in direct costs to collect and process recyclables. So we feel that this bill would hopefully help us to, you know, help the city to save significantly on those costs, and that's our hope.
Okay, two other questions. One, we've heard a lot of back and forth about paper. We had taken paper out of the bill. Is paper something you're okay with out of the bill, or would you like to see more assistance on the paper side?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I would have to get back to you on that, just to make sure that I present the committee with the correct answers.
Okay, if someone from the city could get back to us.
Yes.
And then, on the chemical recycling side, you're talking about proven technologies. Can you give us specific examples of which specific technologies the city would be supportive of versus ones not supportive of?
Mr. Chairman, again, I'd have to get back to the committee with specifics. I don't want to give the wrong answer, but we will make sure that we get the committee.
All right, no, that's fine, that's fine, no worries. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for coming to testify, Mr. Whitaker. We appreciate the New York City Department of Sanitation coming up and offering the view from the city, if you will, for what will be a statewide law. And there seem to be some differences between what's necessary in New York City and what's perhaps necessary in other areas of the state. Since New York City is so far ahead of the rest of the state, if you will, in how it views sanitation issues and waste streams, can you comment on behalf of the city as to where you think you stand in terms of, our previous witness said that this contributes to about 12% of the greenhouse gas emissions for the entire state, that this bill would work on that sector? How much has New York City done so far in terms of sorting out the waste stream on the backside and then disposing of it properly? Where does your waste go and what is the percentage of emissions that New York City is contributing at this point?
Well, Assemblymember, let me just first say that with regards to recycling, the city, on average, produces somewhere between 26 trucks worth of recycling, so we're talking about in the hundreds of thousands of tons per year. I can definitely get you that specific number, I don't have that currently on me, but it's several hundred thousand tons.
So it's a lot of waste. I mean, I agree, it's a lot of waste. I mean, it's a big city, you know, almost 9 million people. And who actually pays for that right now? Is that paid for by New York City taxpayers through their local taxes?
Yes, correct.
So this would be a shift, then, if you will, of some of that burden to, in this case, producers, people who actually produce goods and services, which then would, they would be forced to raise their prices, to pass that cost along. Is that the most efficient way to do extended producer responsibility, to be able to manage this waste efficiently from the city's perspective? Because it's a big city.
Right. So with regards to shifting the cost, like there would be some shifting of costs, obviously based on the way the PROs are structured. With regards to how much that, how much would be shifted in terms of dollar amount, again, I'll have to get back to you.
Well, if you could get back to DEC, they're the ones that really need the information.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate you coming up and testifying. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just point out that the bill encourages manufacturers to reduce the amount of product that they, the amount of packaging that they use, and by doing so, they pay less. So there is, for years, the municipalities and the taxpayers have picked up the tab while manufacturers have increased packaging, perhaps not necess, that's not necessary to get to market. So hopefully, this will encourage them to be more creative and reduce not only their packaging, but their cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, our next panel, Judith Enk, Beyond Plastics, Connor Bamberk, Environmental Advocates of New York, Bobby Wilding, Clean and Healthy New York, Brian Smith, Citizens Campaign for the Environment, and Andrew Williams, New York State League of Conservation voters. Welcome, and in any order you prefer. Good to see everyone.
My name's Connor Bamberk. I'm the Director of Policy for Environmental Advocates NY. I want to thank you for the opportunity to offer our testimony in support of the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act, which will establish a comprehensive extended producer responsibility program that will reduce packaging waste, establish environmental standards for packaging, and shift the financial burden from taxpayers and municipalities to the businesses responsible for the waste. Environmental Advocates' mission is to protect the air, land, water, and health of all New Yorkers. Plastic waste is a direct threat to all of these causes of sustainability in all parts of the supply chain. An average of 6.8 million tons of packaging waste is produced each year in New York, constituting 40% of the total waste stream. Most of this packaging is sent to landfills, burned in incinerators, or winds up as litter on our streets and beaches, litter that washes into streams, rivers, and ultimately the ocean. The volume of curbside materials has increased over time with the proliferation of single-use convenience packaging, more packaging component parts, and increased consumer delivery and online ordering, placing an enormous strain on municipal curbside recycling programs. Nearly all packaging that cannot be reused or effectively recycled is made of plastic. Emissions from the waste sector make up 12% of the state's environmental greenhouse gas inventory. When we refer to greenhouse gas emissions from the waste sector, we're often referring to methane emissions. However, plastics have a significant carbon footprint throughout their lifecycle and emit 3.4% of global greenhouse gas emissions, 90% of which stem from production and conversion of plastics from fossil fuels. The Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act creates a comprehensive program for packaging that will help tackle our solid waste crisis and fix our struggling recycling system. This is done through an EPR program in which manufacturers are financially and physically responsible for the products that they put into market, including the financial cost of disposing or recycling once the product is no longer needed. The legislation will shift the financial responsibility to producers and away from municipalities, and require manufacturers to incorporate environmental and health considerations into the design of their product by restricting the use of toxic substances and prohibiting chemical recycling. The bill the use of toxic substances and prohibiting chemical recycling. The bill will establish environmental standards for packaging, mandating a 50% reduction within 12 years, and requiring all content to be reusable or recyclable. This will divert plastic packaging waste from landfills while simultaneously incentivizing manufacturers to consider alternatives to single-use plastics. EPR legislation provides a framework in which environmental impacts are taken into consideration during product development and helps manufacturers reduce their environmental impact by incentivizing them to reduce the costs associated with end-of-life products. This policy is recommended by the Climate Action Council in the final Scoping Plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from single-use plastics and ensure sustainable management. We urge the legislature to adopt the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act to help ease solid waste and recycling laws, clean up our water waste, and bring us closer to the mandates set in the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Wilding. I am the Executive Director for Clean &amp; Healthy. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you today about this important issue. Clean &amp; Healthy's mission is to build a just and healthy world where toxic chemicals are simply unthinkable. And this policy, the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act, would be an important step in that direction. As I've listened to the testimony and the conversation so far this morning, I just want to flag that we're talking about this as if it's just a waste problem. But this is really a design opportunity. You know, when we enforce and require manufacturers and packagers, the people who are actually making the choices about how much stuff we get and how much stuff is required to move things across the supply chain, they're the ones that have the power to design non-toxic, reusable, reduced material solutions that protect the planet and protect our health. I believe that the bill that is under discussion today is an important step in that direction. And I just want to flag that whether you look at the waste hierarchy that Dave Fattali mentioned earlier, or you look at the more recent framing of circular economy, the solutions that are the most sustainable and most effective are the ones that drive reduction and reuse and remanufacturing, repair, and things like that. Recycling is lower than that. Energy production is a weird thing that's not actually no beneficial to the environment because it's just creating climate gases, is below that, and somehow disposal is, is at the bottom. Without requiring this transition, we allow the, the petrochemical industry to continue having a pipeline for their toxic products to move from oil and gas rigs to climate change. And the discussion of what chemical recycling might be, there's no proven infrastructure or technology for something called chemical recycling that's actually good for the planet. And in fact, as I'm sure that my colleagues will say more eloquently than me, packaging is increasingly coming from petrochemicals, and the chemicals that are contained in these base, in these plastics are harmful. But even just looking at the substances that are associated with plastics, the UN found that there are 13,000 chemicals associated with the production of plastics. 7,000 of those have potential harmful effects, and 32, 3,200 of those have one or more properties of concern. This is a global body that has found this. Clearly, plastic is not a solution. Clearly, non-toxic reuse is the direction that we need to move, and the policy before us today will get us there. I just want to flag that there are solutions that are out there, and there are entities that are working hard to ensure that the solutions we move to are, in fact, safer. The Clean Production Action and the Center for Environmental Health, for example, are creating green screen certifications for materials, and they just released a certification, specification for food packaging, service ware, and cookware for reusable products, as well as having existing policies around the single-use materials that are safer. We urge that the, the solution that the legislature advances has strong source reduction requirements, bans the worst plastics and the worst toxic chemicals, sets non-toxic reuse mandates, and bans false solutions by having a strong definition of recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Good timing.
Perfect. Good morning, everyone. I'm Judith Hink. I'm the President of Beyond Plastics. I served as Regional Administrator at the EPA during the Obama administration, and before that was Deputy Secretary for the Environment in the New York Governor's Office. If you are a fiscal conservative, you should love this bill, because right now, taxpayers are carrying a very heavy load to deal with a massive amount of excess packaging, which is outlined, the environmental impacts are outlined in my testimony. Government has the ability to deal with problems like this if the legislative body adopts a strong law. Look at fuel efficiency standards for cars. Who wants to spend more money at the pump? Well, it was the Clean Air Act that established fuel efficiency standards for cars, and fuel efficiency standards have greatly increased, increased over the years despite strong opposition from car companies. If you go and buy an appliance, you will notice your new refrigerator or dishwasher, you will save money on your monthly utility bill because the new appliances are more efficient with energy. What this bill does is create environmental standards for packaging with a real emphasis on reduction, not just recycling. This bill before you is commensurate with the problem that we're trying to solve. Other states have done this. Some of, some of the states have made some mistakes. For instance, the California Packaging Law specifically exempts, quote, "single-use materials that present unique challenges in complying." Let's not do that. That is a huge loophole. This is a not, this is not a new approach. The late Assemblymember Richard Brodsky and Senator Nick Spano introduced the Environmentally Sound Packaging Act in the late 1980s. It's quite similar to the bill before you today. Nyper published Plague by Packaging in 1990. I helped write this report. It was 33 years ago. We have to solve this problem. We can't let another 33 years go by. The problem has gotten worse. Plastic production is expected to increase 40% by 2030. We're turning our oceans into a landfill. This is an environmental justice issue with where plastic is being produced. Over 10,000 chemical additives in plastics, microplastics are being found in our drinking water, our air, our lungs, our blood, breast milk, and the human placenta. Microplastics can only be tackled if you reduce the generation and use of plastics. And unfortunately, plastics recycling has been an abysmal failure.
Thank you. Nick, pull the mic down.
Did I pull it out? There we go. Good morning. Thank you for providing, providing the opportunity for the New York League Conservation Voters to testify today on packaging reduction. My name is Andrew Williams. I'm the Deputy Director of State Policy at the New York League Conservation Voters, a statewide environmental advocacy organization. NYLCV strongly supports extended producer responsibility legislation for paper and packaging waste. Before I go into more detail on NYLCV's preferred approach to paper and packaging EPR, it is important to note that product stewardship legislation for paper and packaging was strongly endorsed by both the CLCPA Scoping Plan and the Department of Environmental Conservation's 2023 Solid Waste Management Plan. There is already a broad consensus across policymakers, environmentalists, and industry stakeholders that an EPR program for paper and packaging waste is critical to meeting our CLCPA greenhouse gas emission reduction goals and reducing waste at no cost to taxpayers. NYLCV believes that a successful EPR program for paper and packaging should have several components, including minimum recycling content standards for all covered materials, at least one producer responsibility organization that represents covered producers and works with E, with DEC to, to appropriate fees among its members based on a predetermined formula that reflects their share of the total paper and packaging waste stream, the amount of post-recycled content used in the paper and packaging they are responsible for, and the ease or difficulty of recycling the paper and packaging they are responsible for. We also believe that this program should include eco-modulated fees to encourage the use of post-recycled content and higher recyclability in the materials used to make paper and packaging. We believe that it should include both printed paper and packaging materials. It should have a phase-in ban on toxic chemicals in packaging for consumer goods, and it should have a clear role for local governments who currently handle waste disposal and recycling across the state and who have the, the shared burden on them. And finally, it should have the inclusion of commercial waste, not just residential waste, though with recognition that New York City may require special accommodation due to their ongoing rollout of commercial waste zones. New York cannot wait any longer to embrace product stewardship for paper packaging waste. These materials cost local governments tremendous amounts of money, contribute to greenhouse gas emissions, and add to our solid waste crisis. An effective EPR bill will, will reduce waste, improve recyclability, and the stability of our recycling market, and save taxpayers money. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And then, if you, oh, just shift over a little bit so he can have the mic. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Brian Smith. I'm the Associate Executive Director at Citizens Campaign for the Environment. We strongly support comprehensive EPR policy that enacts extended producer responsibility for packaging and printed paper. It's a way to save our solid waste crisis, solve that crisis, to save taxpayers' money, and to help fight climate change. Before I get into the, some of the specific principles I think are critical in a final piece of legislation, I do want to touch on some high-level things. First and foremost, we do believe at DEC that this, as we've advocated for in the past, should be done in the context of the budget. There's been a lot of discussion. Members have raised issues about concerns about DEC, having DEC staff available to oversee this program. DEC staff should be added in the context of the budget, so it's appropriate to do it there. And hopefully, the governor, Senate, and Assembly can come together and agree upon language through that process. Also, when it comes to the key principles of the legislation, I would do want to say we strongly support strong, as we call them, rates and dates. I think some flexibility makes sense, but we need to provide accountability so that we're getting that waste reduction, recycling rates, post-consumer content. On those issues, waste reduction, as my colleagues have said, absolutely is first. Waste reduction and prevention is paramount, but we can't, in this process, lose the fact that we have to save what are really failing recycling programs across the state. We have a series of recommendations. I worked through them all to help prop up and, and, and support robust recycling programs. But chief among this is, we believe that paper should be included in a, in an EPR policy. Paper is the number one thing in our municipal solid waste. It's what we find the most often in our curbside recycling bins. It also contributes to a lot of contamination in commingled recycling bins, and is the biggest cost to local governments and rate pairs when it comes to our recycling systems. So, we think if we're truly going to solve our local recycling problems, we absolutely need to, to include paper, and that's why it was included in, in as a recommendation in DEC's Solid Waste Management Plan. We also support, you know, including a strong definition of recycling that excludes environmentally harmful processes, as has been laid out by others on the panel today. Removing toxics from packaging, we can't have a circular economy if we can continue to bring toxics back into the process. Also, strongly support inclusion of commercial waste. We understand this is a big and complex issue. We understand that might have to happen over time. But as DEC indicated earlier, you know, we're leaving 50% of the problem, almost 50% of the problem on the table if we don't address commercial waste through this process. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Very happy to see you all. And you were very concise, so thank you very much for that. We hear often that what we're doing is adding a burden to manufacturers, and as a result, there is a greater cost to the consumer. Can you just, and this is sort of a general question, is any one of you could respond to that concern that we're going to hear, and we're going to hear a lot, and that there aren't alternatives to what is used, particularly for plastic, although I will point out that the, the bill does provide some exemptions for things like medical devices. So, if you could just opine?
Just, just very quickly, I, I think one thing we have to our benefit is we have decades of experience with these EPR policies throughout Canada and the European Union. This is, you know, 20, 30 years of these policies in place. And study after study, and we can certainly supply those to you, has demonstrated that EPR policies have not impacted consumer, consumer costs. You know, unfortunately, we're seeing some scare and fear tactics pushed out by some manufacturers, that, you know, we're going to lose important products that people, you know, low-income individuals depend upon. That absolutely has not been the case in, in countries that have had these policies for many years.
I, I agree with that. I also think it's an opportunity for companies to save money. So, you've heard of this little mom-and-pop company called Amazon. My colleague ordered something from them online. So, it's an environmentally sound marker made from wood rather than plastic. So, it arrives in this, then it arrives in this, and this, to just get to this, your Eco-Highlighter. So, ironic. So, Amazon could actually save a lot of money in postage by not putting the Eco-Highlighter in four layers of packaging. If this bill, when this bill becomes law, people at Amazon are going to start thinking about things like this. Right now, they have no skin in the game. They put stuff out in the market, and then we, as taxpayers, have to pay to get rid of this. We can't recycle any of this, and the most important part of this bill is reduction, because plastics recycling has been an abysmal failure. I strongly support recycling. I started my town's recycling program in rural upstate New York. Everyone should keep recycling paper, metal, glass, compost, yard waste, and food waste. Plastic recycling is at 5% to 6%. It's never gotten to double digits in the history of the United States, because plastics are too hard to recycle, because there are thousands of different chemicals. You look at your own kitchen, you cannot recycle this with this. It's a different color, different chemical additives, different polymers. So, you and I, as taxpayers, are stuck with sending this to an incinerator or a landfill, because you can't recycle it. So, the most important part of this bill is reduction. If we want to solve the plastic pollution crisis, and I think you all do, we need to focus on reducing the generation of plastic, which almost always happens in environmental justice communities, in places like Cancer Alley in Louisiana, and the Ohio River Valley in Texas.
What is the single most important piece of the current legislation that cannot be undermined?
The, the reduction requirement of 50% reduction of plastic, and secondly, absolutely cannot count so-called advanced recycling as recycling, because it's neither advanced and it's not recycling.
I just want to echo that the definition of recycling is essential, and pushing source reduction is an essential component to this, as we shift the responsibility from taxpayers to the businesses that are actually making the products in the first place and deciding what they get packaged in.
Yeah, and I, I just add on to that, the inclusion of the producer responsibility organizations. You know, we see that as a very important piece of the bill.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. Want to follow up on, on the notion of, of advanced recycling, chemical recycling, peristalsis. Representatives from industry will be here to present, present their view on this. But while I have you, you have, have intimated that, that not only does it, this not work, it's harmful for the environment. In the three minutes we have, if you could really, any of you or all of you expand upon that comment, because, as I said, we, we will hear testimony to the contrary later, so want to give you an opportunity to, to state your views.
I think we're unanimous. We're all opposed to chemical recycling, counting as recycling. The first problem is it doesn't work, and they've been trying it since the early 80s. Secondly, it's basically high heat of plastic to attempt Secondly, it's basically high heat of plastic to attempt to create very small amounts of fossil fuel or syn fuel, the last thing we need. We're using a large amount of toxic chemicals through the process of salalisis to basically try to melt the plastic. There are only 11 facilities in the whole country. It's always just on the horizon, and I don't think creating small amounts of fossil fuels or theoretically new plastics is the solution. We've heard this from industry for years. It doesn't work. It doesn't exist without public subsidies, and certainly in this bill, you don't want it to count as recycling.
I would just add to that, that even in the case where you've got a technology that produces some plastic again, what you have as byproducts are incredibly toxic chemicals that have to be disposed of. So you're perpetuating in any community where you're citing one of those facilities, the presence of highly toxic chemicals. And as Judith said, this is a technology that continues to be promised to us in the future. Story after story comes out where facilities are intended to be constructed, and they end up failing because they're not economically viable. So when you have a failed economic model, coupled with toxics, coupled with not actually returning to the public the good that is promised to this concept of recycling, you're not getting back the material that you're supposed to be getting back. It's just not a technology that should be invested in, definitely should not be considered, anything that is positive for the environment or anything actually recycling.
All right. Other question is, a couple of you mentioned paper. We had taken paper out of the bill after the first bill. Is it some of your contention that paper should be put back into this version of the bill? I see a lot of heads shaking.
Yeah, from our perspective, absolutely. As I said, it's the biggest cost to local governments, and, you know, we understand it's not necessarily always packaging, but I think this but bill rightfully covers, single-use plastic, I mean, it's also a product, but they cause a lot of problems to recycling stream. So does paper, an additional cost. So if we're truly going to save our recycling programs, so they're not getting shuttered or cut back, we need to address paper and shift that burden back onto those that have externalized that cost to producers.
All right, so I see three heads shaking. Any other heads, three of five? Four of five? I'm just trying to get a head count. Four of five? Okay, thank you.
Assemblymember Simpson.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and any of you all can answer this question. How do you see this legislation impacting New York State consumer cost and choice? And how will out-of-state or even out of the United States sellers meet these mandates? Especially if they're in jurisdictions where they don't have a recycling mandate?
So I'd just like to say that this conversation comes up every time we talk policy about reducing toxics. How will companies in Asia or Europe comply with state law here in New York? It just happens because they redesigned their products. We also often hear that there will be empty store shelves because it's too hard to do whatever it is that New York State is attempting. And whether it's fire-safe cigarettes or banning flame retardants in bedding or addressing packaging, the fact is that the industry rises to the occasion and solves the problem, because these are problems that have solutions, and they don't actually end up costing consumers more. As Judith pointed out, the amount of packaging was actually probably more than the total volume of the product that was actually being shipped. So the companies, when they redesign, and they actually are the ones who are bearing the financial burden, are going to be reducing their costs by changing the kind of packaging that they choose. And so it's ultimately, I believe, going to be a benefit for consumers, because they won't be paying as taxpayers, and they won't be paying the high costs that industry is currently passing on to them through all of these extensive forms of packaging.
Have you seen examples of other states, other programs that have been successful and some that haven't been successful? I mean, what is the gold standard here?
I mean, I think we're often still experimenting, but as others have mentioned, there are solutions in Canada that have been very effective in terms of the extended producer group responsibility side. I think, again, we can point to, when it comes to toxics, any number of policies that have been enacted here in New York State that have effectively protected consumers from the toxics exposures.
Thank you.
I would just add again, you asked about consumer choice, and, I'm sorry, you asked about consumer choice, and people in Europe, people in Canada can buy all the same, they can buy peanut butter, they can buy all the same products that we have here today. So it hasn't, again, the evidence of these policies being implemented has indicated that, you know, it will not impact consumer choice at all.
And without this law, we have very little choice if we, as consumers, want to avoid all of this stuff. I mean, what are we supposed to do with this? You can't recycle it, most of it. You don't want to send it to chemical recycling facilities. So this goes to landfills and incinerators, and the plastics industry often puts very misleading labels on plastics with the recycling logo, so it gets into recycling bins. Millions of dollars has been spent telling us as consumers, "Don't worry about all the single-use plastic, just put it in your recycling bin." And then when it goes to the material recovery facility, the staff there have to pull it all out, send it to a landfill or incinerator, and incur the tipping fee. We, as consumers, don't have much choice. And in fact, the organization Oceana did a poll. 90% of American voters want local, state, and federal policies to reduce plastics, and it was bipartisan, Republican, independent, and Democrat. This has to be a bipartisan approach, because we're tired of all of this stuff. We can't get rid of it. Let's not produce so much.
I have another question, related to paper. You had said paper is the number one cost, right? As far as our stream of waste, that's the number one culprit. Is that taking into consideration how many times that paper, the components of that paper has been recycled? I know that I personally take paper out, and I can shred. It doesn't cost me anything to bring to the recycling center. I'm just trying to understand why that.
Yeah, I'm referring to cost to the local governments, to the municipalities for having to, because it's by volume, it's the most, you know, whether it's your junk mail, your catalogs, your cardboard packaging, it's the biggest, it's by volume the most in our curbside recycling bins. So it's the most expensive to collect, to transport, to process, all those things that go along with what local governments have to do with what comes in recycling.
Can I just add that as counties and other municipalities have tried to cut costs for themselves for recycling, they've implemented single-stream recycling, which means that everything gets co-mingled, everything gets a little bit wet. And so this idea that paper is being recycled over and over again is a bit of a misnomer coming out of municipal recycling, because it has to be downgraded. It can't be recycled back into the paper that I'm holding in my hand, which, if it was collected well, it actually could be recycled back paper to paper.
Thank you all for your testimony. I would like to ask, and I'll open this up to everybody, for you to reconcile two realities. One reality is I see in some packaging that I receive, people sending stuff, they've gone to no plastics. I'm seeing envelopes and cardboard, and it doesn't seem that hard. Some businesses on their own are already making this transition, and yet I look at the other realities, I look at the schedule in the bill for timetable, the gradual getting plastics out of packaging, which to me seems too long, a time period. So I invite any of you to opine on why we can't be more aggressive about getting plastics out of all packaging, and also add to that, that plastics in packaging, basically 100% of it is going to a landfill or incinerator, because no one knows what to do with it, and it just gets tossed. So I invite you to reconcile this schizophrenia that I see in stuff that is sent.
So you're not alone. So I use this example. Why couldn't the item arrive in this? FedEx, just an envelope, and they proudly announce, "I'm recyclable." Very helpful in greening. So there definitely are solutions, but the change is not going to happen unless the legislature requires it. We've had decades of companies announcing voluntary reductions or recycled content, rarely achieved. And I think, you know, this bill is actually quite reasonable, because it's incremental. The 50% reduction of packaging material, 10% within three years, 20% within five years, 30% within eight years, et cetera. And so you can course correct along the way if companies are not achieving it. When I was at EPA, I met with a lot of automobile dealers, very nice people. They hate fuel efficiency standards for cars for years, because they said, "Well, what are we supposed to do? Produce electric vehicles? Perhaps." That was technology forcing. This bill will require companies to innovate and not just make voluntary pledges that they mostly do not achieve.
But isn't it achievable today if a business is, I mean, leaving aside some exceptions with delicate things, that it's achievable? So what, can someone explain the addiction to plastic when it's not necessary? And I'd also ask the question, wouldn't the cardboard packaging, isn't it less expensive than the plastic materials?
Plastics is cheap, because the environmental externalities are not factored in.
Okay, I guess my time is up, but thank you.
Sorry.
We'll next go to Assemblymember Giglio.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all of you for being here today. It is very important to reduce waste, and I appreciate all of your opinions, your advice, and your testimony on how to do that. As far as local government is concerned with opting in or opting out, because I see Citizens Campaign for the Environment, in your testimony, there was an opt-in, opt-out for local governments. I would like for you to explain to me exactly what that would look like.
That was included in the legislation. I think that's something important to local governments and some of the government, I know that I don't know if they're here today, but the New York State Association of Counties is important to local governments, that they have that flexibility and option to either participate or not participate. I don't see why they wouldn't and receive the significant financial benefits of participating, but again, that was something that was supported by local governments.
Okay, and then my next question would be for the FedEx envelope that you're holding and the label that's on it with the plastic label that's on it, and the glue that's on it, and the, perhaps it gets delivered, and it's raining outside, and there are important legal documents in there or what have you. How do you prevent that, from those documents, from getting destroyed without covering them with some sort of plastic inside of that cardboard envelope?
Well, you could have a mailbox.
FedEx, federal law does not permit any other mail going into a U.S. Postal Service mailbox, except for mail that is delivered by the USPS. So you're saying everybody would have two mailboxes, a separate mailbox for documents if they were to have it delivered to their home?
Well, we get so much, all of us get so much delivered to our homes today. I mean, the Amazon trucks, the UPS trucks, they're delivering a lot in cardboard. I mean, if this is a really sensitive legal document, perhaps special arrangements could be made, but the status quo today is more and more stuff is delivered to homes, and I've not heard of a serious problem with items being destroyed by water.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, and it really aggravates me, too, when I get a cardboard box, and then there's a plastic bag inside of it with garment or something that was ordered online. So I definitely agree with the reduction. You know, the packaging reduction organizations that are discussed in the bill, how would you suggest that those would be set up? And how long do you think that it would take? Because we listened yesterday to the bottle bill, and we talked about the redemption centers and how they're getting hurt, and how more and more of them are closing, and I just would like to know, from your perspective, what a packaging reduction organization would look like.
So the key thing with the, I'm sorry, I'm talking too much.
Please be brief, because your time has expired.
Sorry, sorry, Chair.
The key thing is for the statute to establish the rules of the road. So here are the environmental standards, have to submit a plan to DEC, and then businesses always tell us, "Just tell us what the rules are. We're innovative, we'll comply." I don't think operation of a PRO is going to be particularly challenging.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Epstein.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank this panel for, you know, all what you do and on behalf of all of us. I wanted to just go back to the health impacts of microplastics and kind of, because I know we're talking about reduction, but I also want to make sure that we're clear what those potential health impacts are. What are you seeing in the health impacts of these microplastics in our systems, in our bodies, and how does reduction improve that?
So there's sort of two pieces to the microplastic question. One is, depending on their size, they can travel in our bodies in ways that we never really anticipated or thought about, because the scale ranges down from the nanoparticles up to, you know, small pieces. We know that they can affect our gut. We also know that they can contribute to things like respiratory problems. On top of that, they also can absorb toxins before they enter our bodies and carry those chemicals into places that we never expect them to. And so we're not just talking about them as like particles of nothingness, but actually having the, bringing with them chemicals that are more toxic. But there's growing evidence that plastics as a whole may be estrogenic, which means that they're disrupting our hormones and having effects on a whole wide array of systems in our bodies.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And so I also want to talk about the impact of trash disposal and the impact that's having, not just in our state, around our country. Can we talk about, like, what does it mean to have these landfill stations and all the trash in those landfill stations and hauling things to landfill stations, and the health impact that's happening on New Yorkers and people around the country?
Well, a massive amount of New York City's waste is trucked in diesel trucks to the Finger Lakes. Finger Lakes folks don't typically like that. And then a lot of Manhattan's waste goes to the Covanta Garbage Incinerator in Newark, New Jersey. When I was at EPA, I met with the residents of the Ironbound community, who are quite concerned about the air emissions from this incinerator. So the incentive here has to be on reduction, because burying and burning waste has enormous impact, particularly in environmental justice communities, and I might add, on the false promise of chemical recycling. Those polluting facilities are typically cited in low-income communities and communities of color.
Yeah, so I really appreciate that point about the chem, so on chemical recycling, so it seems like that's really bad, and so how do we avoid that from happening to allow the chemical recycling from occurring?
I think New York should ban chemical recycling. It's a distraction. It's polluting. It's expensive. No one wants to live next to a chemical recycling facility, because it generates so much hazardous waste and air emissions. And, you know, the simple thing in this bill is to clearly exclude it from the definition.
Thank you very much. Assemblymember Septimo.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me? Great. Okay, so on the questions of advanced recycling, and I'm really just seeking to understand, and you all are clearly experts, so I'm going to sort of ask all of the questions at once, and please feel free to respond. So the U.S. Department of Energy's National Lab recently published a new analysis which found that produced plastic through advanced recycling actually can displace some of the plastic that's produced by traditional carbon fossil fuel-based plastic, production, rather. That coupled with the fact that there are at least some advanced recycling facilities that say their level of emissions and pollution is the same as that of universities and hospitals, coupled with what you said about the fact that advanced recycling really is a pipe dream in terms of what it can actually produce. I'm curious to understand why the allowing of something that may never happen is potentially harmful, especially in a space where maybe the pollution isn't as strong, and if there's the potential, at least, to ultimately keep more plastic out of landfills.
So I think the solution that Judith and I would both say is we don't need plastic, we need to move away from plastic.
Sure.
And so when you create infrastructure like these so-called recycling facilities, you now created a place where people are trying to find you now created a place where people are trying to find material to flow through that, right? And given that it's never going to fully replace virgin plastic, what you're doing is you're actually further codifying the petroleum extraction process and creating a pipeline for that to flow through plastic into these so-called recycling facilities and out into our environment. And so in the name of maybe a small amount recovered, what you're doing is actually making us in a much more ongoing and rededicated way committed to fossil fuels, which I don't believe that anybody here is striving to accomplish.
Sure, but that's sort of an existential exercise, right? That's like we're trying to move against plastic as a concept and as a sort of general use, but in terms of the practicality of today, keeping that piece of plastic out of the landfill.
It's not existential at all because lawmakers all over the country are being told, "Don't pass strong packaging reduction. Let us try chemical recycling." So let's put aside the massive environmental justice and environmental problems. The 11 facilities operating today are handling 1.5% of the plastic waste. And then if the industry gets their wish and 50 facilities are built, it'll handle 5% of plastic waste, kind of similar to failed conventional recycling. So it's not a solution.
Sure.
It's a marketing strategy.
Sure. And I guess I'm trying to struggle to understand how this isn't used as, why it's not viewed as a helpful complement, not at all meant to replace.
It's really polluting. It's not helpful.
But for the facilities that say their pollution matches that of universities and hospitals, if we could establish mandates for their pollution and set reduction rates and whatever, why don't we get to a place that feels comfortable as an incentive? And this is genuinely to understand.
Because the money spent investing in building those facilities is money wasted. And we can avoid plastic and reduce its presence in the beginning, and then we solve all of those problems much more effectively.
Okay. Helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Dursow.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for being here today and testifying. So my question is, and maybe I could have missed this in the whole conversation, is one of your priorities getting rid of and/or banning these advanced recycling facilities?
That would be the most environmentally responsible move, and that's not what this bill does.
No, no.
This bill simply says it doesn't count as recycling.
Okay. And now you said there's, I'm learning as we all go here together, you said there's 11 of those facilities currently?
Yeah, and they don't fully operate. Some of them are not fully operating, some of them are operating at half-capacity. It's not real.
And has everybody on the panel been to those facilities? Obviously, I'm just wondering more from the standpoint of, have you seen what they do, how they function, each and every one of those 11 facilities?
Well, one of my colleagues was on a tour to visit one of these facilities in Texas.
Okay.
And they were not allowed in. They could just watch from the outside of the building, so it wasn't particularly helpful.
Okay. But nobody here has been to one. I haven't either. I'm just asking.
I've been to one.
I just meant the panel.
Tell you about.
Yeah, no, sure, absolutely. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, everybody.
We've been joined by Assemblymember Kellis, and she has a question.
Classic me, I have 10, but I won't be able to get to all of them. So one just basic, what I'm hearing from all of you is that this would reduce the costs to municipalities, this would actually reduce the cost to producers, this would reduce the cost and processing and headache for consumers, this would reduce the amount of chemicals that are used to produce the plastics to begin with, which would make them more recyclable. I'm having a hard time hearing disadvantages, and yet we haven't done it, and you've said it's been introduced since the 1980s. The only thing that I can think of, oh, by the way, it doesn't increase costs or create empty shelves for the countries that have done it, that it is an industry manipulation, push, misinformation, that it is a bad thing because the original product, more and more and more, is petroleum, and it is a way of continuing the petroleum industry and other industries. Is that, am I on the right page here?
Yeah, you've got it. I mean, the fossil fuel industry is more invested than any other sector in continuing to generate single-use plastic packaging. Plastics is the Plan B for the fossil fuel industry because we're making progress on renewable energy, so there's not as much demand for electricity generation in fossil fuels. We're finally making progress on decarbonizing transportation. So companies like Shell and Exxon and Chevron are saying, "Uh-oh, how are we going to sell our fossil fuels? Let's make more plastic."
I just wanted to name it. I mean, I'm hearing it. I drove to get here to like make sure that we were able to have this conversation. And as I was listening in the car, like, this is what I'm hearing, and I, you know, just felt like I needed what you said. But a couple more things. With extended, with the advanced plastics recycling, I want to bring up one of the other things that you mentioned, and this is a comment, is that it seems to me that it is just trading one for the other because it produces a ton of chemical byproducts for the small amount of petroleum or potentially plastics. So then it creates this whole other problem, it's a problem for a problem, with a great nice title with a lot of marketing behind it. So that's the, and the last question I had for you was, can you describe briefly the difference between the oversight mechanism of the legislative EPR bill versus the governor's, particularly oversight of the OPR, and why you think that the legislative version is so important?
Well, the legislative version before you today is much more comprehensive in terms of the required reduction in plastic packaging. The legislative version is clear that advanced recycling or chemical recycling or whatever you call it does not count as recycling. Also, your bill, the legislative version, has an essential provision that requires the reduction of 15 highly toxic chemicals, including PFAS chemicals. That's not in the governor's bill.
One thing I would just add very briefly is that I think we do have to be mindful of the balance between PROs and DEC. We don't want to, you know, overburden already overburdened agency. And when we hear numbers like 62 new staff, there's a concern there that we won't be able to properly oversee that. So I think striking that right balance, getting in the weeds on this, on what responsibilities belong, continue to be with the PRO with that strong oversight enforcement, that's a conversation we need to have.
And putting our money where we prioritize.
I'm sorry. Your time is wasted.
She keeps me on straight now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have an editorial comment for everybody without taking a side pro or con on advanced recycling. What the bill says is because we know technology emerges, the definition will be revisited every three years by the legislature. So we're not saying yes, we're not saying no. We're, in the first iteration of the bill, we're saying it doesn't count. But because we know technology is evolving, and technology is a big part of getting us to our goals, that every three years, the legislature will revisit the definition.
We want to thank all of you for your testimony, your expertise, and appreciate that you mostly stayed on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great to see you all. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next panel, is Craig Cookson here?
Sorry.
Okay. He hadn't signed in, so we weren't sure. Okay. We will have Craig Cookson, Senior Director of Plastics Sustainability, American Chemistry Council, Ken Poclaskey, Vice President of the Business Council, Greg Costa, the Senior Director for State Affairs from the Consumer Brands Association, and Andrew Hackman, the Principal Consultant from the American Institute for Packaging and the Environment. Thank you all. When you testify, please summarize your testimony. You're given three minutes. There will be opportunities in responding to questions to get other points out that may not have been originally touched on in your summary. But we welcome you all, and we're very appreciative of your participation.
Good morning, Senator Harkman, Assemblymember Glick, and members of the committee.
Excuse me one second. I'm not sure if it's that particular microphone, but it's very low. So if you could just speak up so we can hear you without straining.
Sure.
We don't have perfect accuracy.
I'll start again. Good morning. Give me your three minutes. Thank you. Good morning, Senator Harkman, Assemblymember Glick, and members of the committee. I'm Craig Cookson. I'm the Senior Director of Plastic Sustainability at the American Chemistry Council, here to give testimony on a legislative solution to reduce packaging, more specifically extended producer responsibility or EPR, as you know. ACC and its members support efforts to increase recycling reuse of all materials, divert waste from landfills, and keep our communities clean. A well-designed EPR program can accelerate progress towards these goals by building the basic recycling infrastructure and improving collection for all materials, including plastics. We urge this committee and lawmakers to thoughtfully consider the provisions of a widely-supported EPR program, one that helps fund the basic access and collection infrastructure while encouraging innovation and increasing the types and amounts of plastics and packaging that are recycled in New York. I do want to talk about advanced recycling technologies because it was a hot topic on the last committee, and I know I'll likely get a lot of questions. First of all, let's just talk about recycling. As Ms. Anck mentioned, that plastics recycling has been an abysmal failure. That's not true. You know, plastics recycling does succeed where people get their plastics into the bin. Oftentimes, it's a lack of access, and something that this bill here could fix. Your PET soda bottles and water bottles, we know, you talked about the bottle bill yesterday, your high-density polyethylene milk jugs and detergent bottles. If you get those, and increasingly, your polypropylene tubs and lids, think your yogurt tubs and other containers, those could be, those are all, if you get them in a recycling bin, can be recycled. And they will be recycled. They all have great markets around the country. The plastics packaging rate for all bottles is about 30%, obviously not high enough, but really it's a supply challenge and a lack of access and people getting plastics in the bin. What advanced recycling does is it complements that. And yes, it does use heat and potentially catalysts to take plastics back down to their basic chemical components. And I also brought a little bag today of things, you know, popcorn, dog treats, candy bar wrappers, Kind bars, et cetera. These are the types of packages, and I can see the M&amp;M's that everybody has up there, that with advanced recycling could be recycled. I also just want to mention just briefly in closing is I have been to nine facilities across the United States and Canada. So I did want to, you know, contrast my experience with the previous panel, of which leveled a lot of judgments on advanced recycling, but haven't done the basic, you know, go to a facility, see what it's all about, pick up the phone, ask questions of the operators. Appreciate Senator Harkman, you visiting a facility, and we would like to get more lawmakers to facilities. They will open their doors to let you go there and ask questions and see what they're doing. So let me just close up by saying thank you and look forward to a good discussion today and well-crafted EPR in New York. Thank you.
My name is Ken Poclaskey. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for the Business Council of New York State. We're a diverse 3,200-member business association based here in Albany, but with members across New York and in most sectors that would be directly affected by EPR legislation. The Business Council is also, question, Business Council is also part of an informal coalition of more than 100 businesses and business associations who believe that New York State can adopt an effective workable EPR program for packaging. I'm testifying today on behalf of the Business Council, not that full coalition. I think it's fair to say that it's broad business opposition to the apron of S-4246, A-53.2. I won't go into details of those concerns today. We've shared our concerns with both the legislative sponsors or other legislative members, and we've attached our memo on that bill to our testimony today. Overall, we believe that legislation imposes unworkable and necessary mandates and will adversely impact consumer costs and choices as well as business activities. You know, importantly, and we heard references earlier to, you know, Brodsky-Spano legislation of late eighties, New York State was a national leader in solid waste management policy going back to 1988 with its adoption of statewide requirements for source separation of ways for which economic markets exist, as well as creation of programs for technical and financial assistance to both municipalities and businesses to support recycling efforts. In our analysis, unfortunately, since then, that initial policy focus has decreased significantly over the past several years. Even so, we think we can build on those existing policies and mandate success significantly improve the state's recycling efforts. Importantly, we, the Business Council, in cooperation with some of those coalition members, will be sharing draft EPR legislation with the legislature and administration in the near future. Again, today speaking on behalf of the Business Council and not all coalition members, we believe key features of workable legislation are the creation of a business-led producer responsibility organization, and the adoption of packaging-focused EPR plans based on input from multi-stakeholder advisory committee and is always subject to approval by DEC, adoption of initial numeric targets, not mandates, for material recovery, overall recycling, and material-specific recycled content rates, and a requirement that the PRO propose periodic increases in those target numbers based on real-world experience and data, again, subject to public review and DEC approval. A program would need municipalities and private haulers to provide more detailed material and financial-related information necessary for the development of a database recycling plan, and require timely municipal decisions on participation in PRO programs, require a fair sharing of recycling costs, and finally, harmonizing any new EPR law with the existing provisions of state law to ensure that those existing state programs and mandates effectively support implementation of any EPR statute. I would appreciate the opportunity, look forward to any questions, and to follow up with you individually after the hearing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Costa. I'm Senior Director of State Affairs for the Consumer Brands Association. I represent the Consumer Brands Association across the country, but I am from Cortlandt County here in New York and bring my experience of being a New Yorker to this issue, even though we deal with it nationally. We appreciate this forum and the willingness of the committee to, both committees, to take on the subject matter as the consumer packaged goods industry works to address the opportunities and responsibilities inherent in the field of sustainability. Consumer Brands has been closely engaged on this issue in a variety of states across the country, and looks forward to continued engagement here in New York, particularly on the specifics of extended producer responsibility. We've also previously sent in our thoughts on the bills that are active and the governor's proposal in the past, and I'll let those stand as they are because for today, I think one of the things that we would like to bring to the table is just the idea that I think we still have an opportunity to go back and take another look at this process and move forward. We remain supportive of the comprehensive, well-designed, extended producer responsibility program for consumer goods packaging that is the goal of the committees and the administration and the DEC. And we also think that we'd like to go back to a little bit of square one and I think, you know, reexamine where we're headed on this. I mean, there's been a robust, let me not take anything away from you, there's been a robust, you know, stakeholder process that's gone on. But I also think that getting people in the same room as we've done today is kind of a, at the same time, is kind of a helpful way to go about that, maybe in a less formal way and trade misinformation. I have testified behind some of the folks that were on the last panel before, and, you know, by the time I'm finished listening to that panel, I'm ready to run out and vote for the bill, you know? You know, and there's no question. And then we hear another side on enhanced recycling, and that's why I think that maybe in front of you, a little more give and take would be helpful. There's no question that we are at a pivot point, and it's time to figure out what to do next. But I think that there are, industry has a few principles that I think are worth looking at, and they're in my testimony that I sent to you today, that are worth looking at because they're not defensive, they're principles that I think we can all live with, which is the idea that this all has to be inclusive and it has to be very, very, you know, very goal-directed, and that's what we would point you to. I can answer questions as well, but I can't thank you enough for holding this forum today and including all of us on both sides of this issue. It's been very informative for us as well. Thank you.
Senator Harkman, Assemblymember Glick, my name is Andy Hackman. I'm here on behalf of Ameripen, which represents the entire packaging supply chain, so folks that make packaging, consumer brands that use that packaging, and then a number of folks that actually deal with the management of packaging at the end of the lifecycle. I want to echo the appreciation for being here today. I want to echo the appreciation for being here today, and I want to say, we want to get this right, too. We have been supportive of legislation and worked hard to get to supportive positions in states like Maryland and Washington State. That hasn't been easy, but we do feel like there are lessons that can be learned from those states as they've considered legislation, and some key points relative to thinking about factors that are before the bills that are in front of you, and more generally on this topic. Realistic goals is important. We've heard a lot about source reduction today. We would encourage you to also think about realistic goals with regard to recycling's rates, recycled content, and reuse. We appreciate that there's a waiver process in the bill that we've amended. However, we're looking at potentially thousands of waivers, and the burden on the DEC would be impressive. We've seen programs in states like Maine where there's not an acknowledgement for realistic approaches to vast issues like this, and there's been over 1,000 waiver applications in states like that. With regard to source reduction specifically, we did a survey of our members, and over a three-year period, we saw source reduction in the percentages of 1% to 2% per year. That equates to 19 million pounds of packaging that's been reduced in one year. So we're committed to making progress. I think we want to ensure that the goal is reasonable. 50% source reduction would be the highest source reduction goal we've probably heard anywhere in the world. So we want to get it right. And we do believe that the needs assessment that's being done by the Center for Sustainable Materials Management, CEDAP, five times fast, and the College of Environmental Sciences and Forestry, offers an opportunity to try to get some of these numbers more precise before we put them in statute. Certainly, our preference would be that the PRO organization would work with the state to establish goals, propose those goals, have them reviewed by an advisory council before we put them into statute. And then I think the final point that I want to make with regard to the structure of the legislation is the funding mechanism. The funding mechanism in the current proposal includes the cost of disposal. If we're going to reimburse and fund disposal, we're not going to improve the recycling system. So we really encourage there to be a fine perspective put on how we're going to have the program function. Is it actually going to improve recycling, or is it just going to fund the existing system? We understand the goals and the drivers and the goals, but for the short term in particular, we need to get the funding mechanism correct, and we don't want to reimburse the disposal cost. Nowhere else in the world is disposal cost reimbursed. And then I think the final point in terms of timing, when you look at the structure of a program, states have taken different approaches. Maine was first, and they've got the program that's probably most akin to the A draft. They're going to be the last in terms of actually distributing money out to the municipalities in 2027. So there's ways to do this, there are states like Colorado and other states that have taken a more blended approach, and we encourage you to work and look at those approaches as well, and happy to work with the committee on that. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. Couple comments, and then if I have time, a question or two. You know, we wanted, we felt it was important to set real absolute levels as opposed to targets or goals that were aspirational. But as mentioned, after listening to all of you last year, we put in the ability for waivers, both on rates and dates and content, all of them, on individual products. You can apply for a waiver because we listen to you. So it was important. It's also on a 15-year scale, because you've got the three-year scale up, and then it's 12 years. I just wanted to put that on the record, that we did listen, and we did make some accommodation there. Just a quick question on, not question, comment on the chemical recycling. You know, not cognizant of what coming out of the back of the pipe, and I thank you all for the hospitality in inviting me down there. The one drawback for that facility that jumped right out of me is that the heat that was used was generated from the refining of oil. And it's just New York State's now policy and law that we're going to a zero-carbon economy. So to take advantage of a process that encourages oil refining is really contrary to New York law. But that's just one comment about that facility. Quick question to all of you. I met with a cardboard manufacturer. They do all recycled content, but they said for heavier things, they need some virgin content. There's now a new machine that can do it recycled. It's $650 million. So are there incentives perhaps that we could offer, whether they be manufacturing, tax credits or something like that, investment tax credits, that might make getting from point A to point C easier for industry?
I mean, sure, as part of New York State's longstanding economic development programs. So we know how to do that, and they're, I mean, if they're not adequate or targeted enough today, the legislature has the capability of modifying them going forward. I think it's, just one comment, though, on the flexibility. We appreciate the amendments that were made, but recognize that for a manufacturing facility like that, looking at, you know, million-dollar-plus capital investments, that is a multi-year planning process and implementation process. And the possibility of a waiver, which you may or may not get, still leaves you on a path to having to achieve the targets in the bill, or you're being cut out of the New York State market. So our view, at least, say if there's an initial, say, five-year planning, a five-year initial compliance period, with those recycling and recycled content targets being set by the PRO with approval of the department as goals, not mandates, gives companies the ability to...
But the PRO, the PRO can petition the DEC to move all of the rates and dates.
Which they may or may not get. And so if you're going to allow companies to respond to new state mandates, this is a mandate in law that says, if you don't comply, your packaging cannot be sold, and your products cannot be sold in your state. I may or may not get a waiver from that. So you're forcing the company to make capital, long-term capital plans and capital investments aimed at a target that's in statute. We think there's ways to build more flexibility, especially in the initial years of a bill. It would avoid that type of conflict and challenges. It still gets you to where, as you said, growing in the same direction of what this legislation wants accomplished.
All right. Thank you. I think my time's up, unfortunately.
Can I...
Oh, wait, it was still yellow, I'm sorry.
So, Senator, you mentioned the importance of carbon reductions, and so, you know, sort of leaving aside economic incentives, I do think what the committee really needs to think about in any sort of EPR bill, especially as you're thinking of, you know, your greenhouse gas footprint here in New York, New York State, is comparing different types of packaging. And on balance, I mean, what you'll find if you do a lifecycle analysis, and you sort of look at plastics packaging versus competing materials, the plastics are going to have a lower greenhouse gas footprint from, you know, beginning of life to the end of life. So I think very important that the committee thinks about that as they're designing their bill, especially as you're thinking about source reduction. You might have unintended consequences in how that's designed, that's going to have New York have a higher carbon footprint unintentionally.
If I could touch on that briefly, I know your time is up, Mr. Chairman. You know, one thing to keep in mind about my members, as you look at my testimony, is that my members are customers in many ways of the manufacturers of packaging. Of course, they specify often, but they are still customers. And the other thing that I'll say is, our members are always looking for the least expensive, most, you know, carbon-efficient way to move product across the country. They don't want to move paper, they want to move product, and they don't want to move plastics either. Thanks. Thank you.
We'll definitely be coming back for a second. I appreciate your participation. A great deal. Mr. Cookson, you made reference to a couple of the types of plastic that winds up being recycled. Soda and water bottles, detergent jugs. What can't be recycled on the jug is the hard cap on my laundry. So it sounds to me like you're referring primarily to what would, for the consumer, look like, plastic number one and plastic number two. If I, I do go through the garbage, so. And those tend to wind up becoming my fleece sweater or something. But there are other things that come to my house that are plastic three, plastic four, plastic five, that I don't actually think do get recycled. And when we put all of that together, it creates for the municipal recycling plant that I went to, they have to separate that, and then what gets separated out does go to a landfill. So I'm just wondering, what do you get from an advanced recycling, and which one of these plastics would wind up being done in an advanced recycling?
Great question. So mechanical recycling, which you mentioned, does a great job of taking number-one bottles, number-two bottles, number-five containers, and those are all sorted out, and they go to markets and become new products again. If you put those into the bin, they're going to get recycled. What advanced recycling does is takes a lot of the other stuff, so complements mechanical recycling. So think your pouches of snack mix or granola, your tubes of hand cream or toothpaste, you know, snack wrappers that we, as we have here, the M&amp;M's there. So in a future, we would, it would be great to be able to put, and that's one of the benefits that an EPR program could have, is set up the collection regime, so we can put more of those types of plastics into our bin to get recycled. Now, one way they're not going to get recycled is if you say, we're going to rule out this entire market, which is advanced recycling, that can take those now, but if you cut off the end market, then you'll never get those recycled.
Well, what do you get?
So what you get is, so take a pyrolysis facility. They take in the plastics, and what they do is they heat them, and they heat those plastics until they melt, and this is an oxygen-free environment, so there's no combustion or burning, and they heat them until they turn into gas vapors. And that basically pulls the molecules apart, and they cool and condense them, and what they get is called a pyrolysis oil. And that is equivalent to essentially NAPTHA, which is a byproduct of, or a co-product of crude oil that's used for chemical and plastics manufacturing. So when you're doing advanced recycling, what you're doing is you're displacing the need for a virgin fossil resource like oil or natural gas. So you keep that molecule in play, and it displaces that, the raw material. And you mentioned, you're right, through mechanical recycling, the plastic usually goes back into some sort of durable good, a fleece jacket, or a railroad tie, or a park bench or something. Through advanced recycling, because you're taking it back to the molecular level, it can go back into food contact packaging again, for your pet, or, you know, Kind bars. Look this up. This is, Mars is doing this, these are now, they're making this, so this can be recycled, and then we'll also have recycled content in it in the future.
At the end, you said "in the future." What is the future? Like, we've been asked to...
Yep.
...look at our timeline...
Yep.
...for the bill, and I was here when we had the sound packaging bill.
Yep.
So when people have said, we don't want to rush to the conclusion, I can tell you, we have not yet rushed.
Yeah. So the future's now. It is happening. It isn't happening at the rate or at the, you know, amounts that we want it to, but that's where you all come in in New York. If you craft a sensible, you know, broadly-supported EPR bill that increases access, right, and educates the consumer better on what to recycle, and we create that supply, that supply will be there for companies to then build that demand, because the demand is there.
I only have 20 seconds. I would just say that I go to our recycling center in New York City, and there is a lot of product that is not recyclable, that goes in and gets taken to a landfill. So I'm not sure why it is not currently enough to provide...
Companies like Waste Management Republic are now investing in the sortation technology to take things like this, so, because they now have an end market to send it to. So that is the future for New York with a good EPR bill.
Thank you very much.
We will now go to Senator Kansaneri Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. If I could just continue the conversation, because I share the chairwoman's concern that there are so many plastics that are not recycled currently, and what do we, what needs to be done to make sure those plastics are in the stream of recyclables?
Yes, so first of all, again, let's remember why we have plastics in. So I think that's really important. Thanksgiving is coming up, right? Everybody's probably going to have a turkey, most folks. You know, that turkey will, no, that turkey would be wrapped in plastic, right? And that's going to keep that turkey fresh, it's going to keep it without freezer burn, make sure that it gets delivered most efficiently to the consumer. Unfortunately, right now, we aren't recycling that plastic wrap that the turkey comes in. But that's where advanced recycling comes in. So if an EPR bill in New York, number one, limits advanced recycling, it says it doesn't count, it's going to sort of curtail the incentive for companies to sort that plastic out, to, you know, send it to a recovery facility. And also, with the recycled content mandates in the bill, if it doesn't count for that, then companies get no credit for working this into their product as well. So again, New York can really send an important signal to the end markets by saying, we think this counts, and of course, you can do it and put, you know, different guardrails around it.
And the answer, then, is to put back into the bill that chemical recycling does count as recycling. Is that the...
Yes.
...simple answer?
Yep. And we would just add in, you know, add in provision on third-party certification. There's organizations like ISCC, and SCS, and UL, and others that do certification for sustainability standards, so they'll go down to each facility, make sure they're receiving plastics, and everything that they say is happening is happening.
And I guess as a follow-up, and generally, what have other states done that's been successful? Mr. Hackman, I believe you mentioned something about it, because I, of course, the concern is we don't want to lose business here in New York, we don't want to see businesses go to other states. So what are other states doing that are preserving jobs for those states? Can you help us add to that?
Yeah, so there are four states that have passed EPR laws across the country. Maine, Oregon, Colorado, and California, they all are very different, and they're all very much in the very early implementation cycle of drafting regs. Some are not even in the drafting regs phase. We do believe that an approach that vests authority, and you heard this from the first panel and from DEC, vests some authority with that producer responsibility organization, with the producers, to help run the system, help invest in the infrastructure, and not where the state is essentially making the decisions for investment in infrastructure and those types of approaches. We've seen that challenge in Maine. Like I said, Maine passed their law first, they're going to be the last one to disperse money, because the state has to approve every decision, every investment in infrastructure, and every payment, and every fee. If you look at the A draft, the department is setting fees for the producers, and that's a challenge in terms of an efficient program.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for Mr. Hackman. I've received a lot of concern, a lot of contact about the definition of producer, and what that means, a responsible party for generating the package. Will this work, this current definition, work or not? And then my second part of that question is, what are the other options in the other EPR bills that you've seen across, you know, that have enacted an EPR program? Is there a better way to do it?
So we represent the entire packaging supply chain. So we've got folks that make the paper bags, the plastic bags, the cardboard boxes, all the packaging suppliers. We have brand owners. And the consensus is, the brand owner who makes the decision should be the producer for that packaging, because there may be six or seven different components that go into one packaged good that ends up with the consumer, right? The label, the bottle, the cap, and everything else. It's the brand owner that ultimately makes the sale in the state, or makes the sale to the retailer in the state, and that brand owner, whoever it is, it could be Procter &amp; Gamble, to your local grocery store that's a national brand. The brand owner's the one that legally should have the first responsibility. Now, there are occasions in a waterfall effect, we've done a lot of work on this, there's a recycled content law in Washington State that has caused some problems, because the definition of producer hasn't been precise enough for the department to figure out who to call. So from our perspective, the brand owner would be first in line, and then you have things like licensees that, you know, Mr. Clean, for example, will show up on a car air freshener, but it wasn't made by Procter &amp; Gamble. And so, like, you need to understand who's got transparent responsibility for making the packaging decisions, because that's what the bill, or what the program should be about, is who's making decisions about the packaging material. And then when you get into e-commerce, obviously, there are the brand owners of the product that is shipped to you, and then there are the brand owners of the material that's used for distribution. And again, Washington and Oregon have probably had the greatest amount of detail in this area, and I think the bill here could learn from that a little bit. But it is a challenging question, and that's where all the lawyers show up, is because who has to write the check at the end of the day?
Can I comment on that feature?
I wholly endorse what Andy said on this. I just want to clarify something. I represent mostly brand owners, and the brands don't necessarily sell into the state or to a retailer. or to a retailer. The lion's share of our members, our manufacturers, our producers, sell to distributors. And they may sell to a distributor, FOB, the loading dock in Minnesota, or Iowa, or Ohio, and it makes its way to Alaska, and Hawaii, and Maine, and New York. And so there are, there are vagaries in how this definition works as to who has responsible, responsibility for what and at what point. That's, that's not, that's particularly true, I should say, when it comes to the PCR rates and dates, and how the manufacturer, in this place, in this case, a brand owner, goes about fulfilling those obligations. And there's a lot that's out of their hands at that point, because of where they manufacture, and how that product is eventually delivered to the state.
I see how complicated it's going to be to actually track this product through all of the different stages of its movement.
If I could give you a quick example, we have one manufacturer that manufactures only from one plant in Ohio, and sells a product that you would know well from the grocery store, from coast to coast. And when they are faced with the obligation of fulfilling a 15% or a 20%, whatever it might be, post-consumer recycled material level, they're having to do that for the entire country, not just for New York. Whereas there might be a manufacturer who manufactures possibly only in New York, or for the tri-state area. And they're going to be able to do it, because most of their product is going back into New Jersey, or New York, or even Connecticut. And New Jersey and presumably, New York will have that. So it becomes complicated, and, you know, we can go over that in much more detail.
I do think part of the important structure relative to figuring this out is whether or not the State Department's got to figure this out, and this is something we're dealing with, as we're really talking about this for Washington State's bill for next year, or if it's the producer responsibility organization that has to figure that out. And where those decisions are made, and the authority that's vested in the producer responsibility or the packaging reduction organization, it would probably reduce the burden for the state, quite frankly, if there was that power vested in the PRO to figure this out amongst ourselves, and submit a plan that works for the state.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to Senator Stack.
Thank you again. I'd like to pick up where Assemblyman Simpson left off. We see these kinds of issues in New York a lot, where we look to go our own direction in a national market. Is it feasible to say that consumer choice or cost will be impacted by a decision that we make? If you've got five or 10 different varieties around the country that are saying, this is what our packaging needs to be, this is what our packaging needs to be, and that either adds cost, or overhead, or complication in the system, where there'll be some people that'll say, New York market isn't worth it, I'm not going to play there, and somebody else will, but they play there at a, at a reduced amount of selection, or increased amount of cost. And I guess where I'm going is, is that at the end of the day, is this a conversation that ought to be had at the federal level?
We certainly have, have tried to ensure greater consistency amongst the states for a program that can be implemented by one national PRO organization. Like, you know, we don't have a Speaker of the House right now, down in D.C., right? So.
Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, I think, I think our faith in.
We're fully staffed here, though.
Yeah, I figured as much. But, so while there have been ideas that have been floated at the federal level in different versions of legislation, none reintroduced this Congress. We don't see a federal bill passing any time in the next two years. I'll be that generous at this point. But in terms of finding consistency in, in cost of goods, and ensuring that there is a free cost of goods flow, some of that consistency amongst states is important. And I think the goals are also important. If the goals, for example, for reuse, if we end up having to hit really impossible reuse goals, that changes the whole retail marketplace, right? You know, you're suddenly carrying five, or six, or 10 different, you know, empty containers into a retail store. That does make distribution of a product really challenging, if we're suddenly forced into a situation where that's the only way to achieve compliance in New York, is through some structure like that, which I don't think we've been even envisioning.
And if I could add one, one thing on that topic, the way we're crafting our legislation, the PRO, the compliance with the, these packaging goals would be measured across the PRO, which would allow them, for example, to, if a producer, the Ohio producer, who doesn't have regional or local access to recycle content packaging, that can be dealt with within the PRO structure. It can be different, you know, eco-modulation of pricing within the PRO is a component of the bill. Rather than say every single entity selling into New York State is going to be subject to compliance with every one of these numeric standards, we think that's the kind of flexibility that can get built into the program as well.
The only thing, Senator, that I was going to add is that in my comments today, I allude to the idea of regionalizing. Like all of you, I'm, I'm very New York-centric, I'm proud of my state, I'm proud of how we've led on so many things, and I think this is one of those places. We have a process that is in varying states of fits and starts, in, in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Vermont, Maine, of course, is in regulation, we've got a process going on in New Jersey. I think that a, a New York process that takes into account the regional aspect that we have in the Northeast, that we don't see many other places in the country. I mean, we've got six states next door, and a couple south of us that could really join in. And I think that attacking this in a way that would include those states in, in the process would show the kind of leadership that we'd like to see. My members would benefit greatly from being able to participate in something that region. Thanks.
For the Business Council, point blank, should the energy recovery or the advanced recycling be included in our definition of recycled, based on, on what we're trying to do?
Well, should the material recovery? We think yes.
Yeah, advanced recycling, should it, should it, does the Business Council feel that it should be included in the?
Yes, we do.
All right. And then for Mr. Cookson, the last panel talked about the recycling numbers on plastics, and I understand from the conversation that these numbers are put on there, I think anticipating in the future, a future process for recycling all of this stuff. Is it true, though, that a lot of these recycled, you know, people put stuff in their bins, and then presently, a lot of it's going, going into the, the normal waste stream?
Yeah, all those numbers do, they're called resin identification codes. So they really just tell people what resins those plastics are made from. There is a greater effort for, on labeling, I, you know, would turn it over to Andy here if we still had time, but to really think about how we do a better job in labeling so consumers are less confused. But Ameripen is working on it, on, you know, some labeling.
An important point to add to that, and I think it's, it's sort of come up during the D E C testimony, we don't know the answer to some of these basic factors and how we're doing. That's where something like a needs assessment is important. The E C asks some information of waste management facilities, but we don't ask them when they source, when they collect source-separated material. What happens to it? What, by category, how much goes into the market, at what price, how much is disposed of, at what cost? These are sort of fundamental decisions that this legislation is based on, that we don't know. And we think needs assessment, D E C, data collection can help solve.
Thank you. And that's why the needs assessment isn't being undertaken.
It won't be done until sometime in the middle of next session.
Next, Assemblymember Epstein.
And thank you, Chair. Do we all agree here that we need to reduce the amount of plastics in our, in our stream? Is there an agreement on this, for this panel?
I think you need to think about the impact that that would cause. I mean, again, I'm looking at those M&amp;M's or Thanksgiving turkey, you know.
So I'm a vegan, so I won't have a Thanksgiving turkey, but, you know, but, yeah, so the question is, is reduction, it's the levels of packaging, should that be reduced?
Yes, we should reduce our use of packaging.
Yeah, does everyone agree that we need to reduce packaging? And we also agree that we need to reduce the amount of plastics in our, in our waste stream? Is that, yes, good. Do this panel think that there's a health impact to the microplastics? We heard the last panel talk about a health impact to microplastics. Do you all agree that there's a potential health impact?
Personally, I can't dispute that. I'm not a, you know, I'm not a chemist, but I believe what, what I read. And, you know, that, you know, my, my members have been on record for quite some time as favoring an EPR plan. We'd just like to see one that has a very strong PRO. The other, the other thing I would add to that is that, is that, you know, one size doesn't fit all. But remember, my members would love to reduce the amount of packaging they use at all times. They don't want to transport packaging across the country, they want to transport a product.
Yeah, saves them money. Right, exactly.
You asked about microplastics. You know, the World Health Organization has not concluded that there's a cause to human health, right? But they are looking at that. We fund research, it's called the Mari Research, the Microplastics Advanced Research Innovation Initiative. And we do that with many other global organizations. So yes, it's a, it's something we need to be thinking about, we need better research on it. And most microplastics actually kind of come from things like apparel, like gets washed in the washing machine, so something to think about.
Great. And Business Council, you guys also agree there's a potential health impact, or you don't have a position on it?
Yeah, I mean, we're following the, the research, and Craig said it well.
Great. And so, so on just advanced recycling, if I can just for a minute, where's the closest sighting facility to New York?
The closest, I'm sorry?
Facility?
The closest is probably, it depends, either Akron, Ohio, or outside of Raleigh, North Carolina.
And so the, if we were to send advanced recycling, we'd have to be obviously shipped to that facility?
Yes.
So, and the reason you're not, you don't have a site in New York, is it because people don't want it there, or you just haven't had the model, or kind of why is there no thing closer?
Yeah, I mean, 24 states have passed legislation to ensure that it's regulated correctly as manufacturing. I think you might see some, well, you definitely would see some interest if it was included in your EPR bill. So I think sort of, you know, creating a hospital, hospitable environment for it would be.
Well, I've heard some concerns around it. I know I'm out of time, but I've heard some neighborhood concerns as well, besides sighting concerns.
Next, we will hear from Assemblymember Smallin.
I just, I just want to take a look at this whole bill, if you will, from the consumer perspective. And, you know, particularly with consumers having the, the choice of buying what's, what's good for them, what's good for their families, how they, how they view, you know, something like an extended producer responsibility bill. And so generally speaking, will this bill reduce the cost of goods for consumers?
We've not seen any data that shows that it reduces costs. I think there's a lot of academic debate on whether or not it increases cost or not. You know, you're looking at costs that are borne by the entire consumer base in the United States. And, you know, it's been admitted, I think, in discussions here, that the cost that would reduce to municipalities would have to go into those cost of goods.
Well, yeah, I would add to that, 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 you know, allowing the decisions on how this process is going to work to fall to the PRO predominantly, with, you know, with all due oversight from the D E C, from the state, from the legislature, who can come back and revisit this every year, I think that is one of the things that's going to keep costs down. If you leave control over the costs of how you're going to collect and disseminate this material for recycling to the producers, to the people who are actually paying the bill, you're going to see a streamlining of that process.
They'll make it efficient, certainly.
And some efficiency. And make no mistake, I mean, with the, all the appropriate oversight, that would be part and parcel to the legislation, and, you know, exerted through regulation by the D E C.
So, so what I'm asking, though, is, is, you know, what is the cost? Who pays the cost? And is the cost worth it to, to New York to be able to do so? I mean, you get a variety of responses from, you know, where you stand, where you set this issue, but from the consumer's perspective, they're the ones that ultimately pay all the costs. Either they pay the tax, or they buy the good, or they buy the service.
One of the questions on that is, you know, I live in a very rural area of state New York. I do not have, I tried to get waste management to come to my home, Syracuse haulers, no one would come to my home.
I take my own.
I have a, I have a gentleman with a, with a pickup truck that comes and, and takes our stuff, and he takes recycling to one place, and he takes something else, and I, and I pay him the going freight. I'm not sure what is going to happen when he's faced this gentleman with the pickup truck that also moves rocks and boulders, and does other things on, on this property. I'm not sure what that's going to do to cost, I really, I really don't know. But I will say that, that just making sure that the decisions are made as close to where the, where the decisions are made as close to where the money's being spent, the better off the consumer's going to be.
Thank you.
We had a process in Maine, and it was very interesting, during the, during the hearing, representatives of municipalities came in and they were asked, well, what will you do with the money you save in taxes? And this is all in, in, in the Journal. I mean, and they said, well, we'll figure out other effective ways of spending that money. So the same people that pay the taxes are also the consumers, and they're going to be paying.
I appreciate all that. And I just want to say, I just think we should know the cost upfront, and we should know what we're getting into with any bill that we, that we pass in New York State. And that's been a major flaw in the climate leadership and the Community Protection Act bill, the bills that have come out of it. So thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's testimony.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Assemblymember Otis.
Thank you, Chair Glick. Ken, I have a question for you in terms of Business Council, big group, and I, earlier I spoke about a variety of practices in terms of packaging now, that people are doing on their own. Are you hearing from your members a variety of views on these issues, or levels of concern? Because some of the private sector market is moving towards, let's say, less plastics and less packaging in, just on their own. Curious if any of that's trickling up to you or not.
Yeah, I think the general trend is that companies are recognizing that this is a policy decision that New York State's likely to make at some point in the future, and focusing on how to, how to make this as workable as possible. Towards that end, one of the questions our members have is, and you look at certain material types, aluminum cans, for example, have gone through significant material reduction over the last 20 years, lots thinner than they used to be. I've done the easy, the low-hanging fruit, if you will. How do I get, get credit for that, if the new standard is another 50% reduction, a 25% reduction? So yes, companies are doing things on their own, they want to make sure that recent progress is also credited under, under any new EPR law.
And thank you, and thank you for your, the Business Council's engagement in these discussions, in your testimony. Thank you.
Assemblymember Dursow.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate it. My question's for Mr. Cookson, just to go back to the advanced recycling. As someone who's actually picked up garbage for 15 years and recycling, it's, it's fascinating to me. Currently, can advanced recycling recycle all plastics? Regardless of the number that's on it, or anything like that? Currently, with the facilities that are in place in those other states, can they recycle all plastics?
It, it depends on the technology. So pyrolysis technologies, for example, tend to recycle, you know, your polyethylene, so that would be your, your film plastics, your, you know, plastic bags, your dry cleaning film pouches, things like that. Gasification technologies, or, you know, can, can recycle different types of plastics, your, your, I think your clam shells, if strawberries come in. They can also recycle carpet, which is really interesting. So it kind of depends upon, there's, advanced recycling is an umbrella term that really talks about a lot of different technologies, so it, it depends on the technology.
Is individual facilities different?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, the emission rates that come from these facilities, do you have any numbers on those, or are they all different, depending upon?
Well, there was a study done, a couple of things on emissions. One was, good company from Eugene, Oregon, did a study a couple of years ago that looked at sort of the, just the emissions from the facilities, and found, and it was talked about earlier, found that these facilities tend to on par have, have emissions that are the same or less than your average university, or your average hospital, right? They have to, those, you know, they have a boiler, right, to provide, you know, heat and steam to, to students, or to patients in the hospital. Or to food manufacturing, places that make, you know, candy bars and potato chips. One thing on emissions that's really important is, so Argonne National Laboratory, just last month, released basically a three-year study that they did, where they looked at real data from eight different companies, pyrolysis companies. And using that data, and they put that into their GREET model, which is recognized by the U S E P A and D O E, it's recognized in the Inflation Reduction Act, it was a peer reviewed study that was in the Journal of Cleaner Production. And they found that if you take plastics through pyrolysis, back through pyrolysis oil, and then make plastics from that pyrolysis oil instead of a virgin feedstock, that you reduce your greenhouse gas emissions up to 23%. You also reduce your fossil energy use, and you also reduce your, you conserve water as well. So I think that's really important, that we'll make sure that the members of the committee have access to that study, because it's really the kind of quintessential study out there now.
That would be very helpful. And just really quick with the 30 seconds I have left, can you just give me some quick examples of post-used plastics that come out of these facilities?
Yeah, you know, Kind Bar is, is one, is, that's, you know, a Mars product, they made an announcement. This is kind of a neat little, you know, dog treats, you know, your flexible packaging, so pet food companies are looking at this, and Mars also with their Shiva cat food line. Wendy's drink cups are another one. Wendy's drink cups are another one where they have an ISCC certified cup made from advanced recycling. Again, very important when you're talking about food, medical, and pharmaceutical contact. The FDA really regulates on what can go into those types of products. So advanced recycling, because it takes it back to the basic chemical constituents, can go back into those types of food and pharma contact packaging again.
Great. Thank you, sir.
We'll now hear from Assemblymember Septimo.
Thank you. Just a quick question on something that I believe it was you, Craig, when you were speaking before. You said something about having advanced recycling facilities correctly classified as manufacturing. What did you mean by that?
Yeah, when the technologies kind of first started years ago, they were incorrectly regulated as waste incineration. You know, they were taking, you know, materials in, they were using a process that used heat. And so oftentimes what happens is if you're misregulating something, it's kind of putting a square peg into a round hole. And so as a technology, especially a new technology comes into any state, and they'd have to go to the Department of Environmental Conservation, right, to get their air permit. They're both from a construction standpoint and an operator. They'd have to get a water permit for any water discharge. They have to work with the local community to find an appropriate place to site a facility. They have to line up their investors that are going to invest. They have to line up the labor. They have to line up, they have to line up where they're going to get the plastics from, making, you know, business deals with different generators of plastic that might start accepting this into their, you know, programs because now they have an outlet. They're going to have to find customers for their product. So if they go to DEC and they say, okay, well, you know, let's, we think you're supposed to be down in the, you know, the hallway where they're regulated as waste incineration because there's no sort of specific, you know, guidelines on that. They're going to go down a path and eventually going to say, wait a second, you're not doing that. You need to be down the hall where we regulate manufacturing facilities. So all of this takes time, and especially to protect the public health. You want to make sure that the DEC is regulating a facility for what they are, not something that they are not.
Okay. I've got just a minute left, so I, but I'd love to hear more about that at some other point. How are advanced recycling facilities regulated in other places? So in other countries where they exist, in other states? My colleague here sort of started to touch on that question, but I'd love to hear about the specifics, particularly.
Yeah, I can't speak to other, you know, countries, but at least here in the United States, 24 states have passed, including neighboring Pennsylvania, have passed legislation that ensures that these facilities are regulated as manufacturers and not as like solid waste incineration. Because again, they recognize, number one, they're not receiving waste. And number two, they're not incinerating anything. So that's just, again, the wrong, it doesn't regulate for the nature of the operations that they're doing. So that is an important part of the process and also make sure that recycled content is recognized.
And that comes with its own set of environmental regulations, et cetera, I'm presuming?
I'm sorry?
And that comes with its own set of environmental regulations?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, any manufacturer that would want to come into New York State would have to go to DEC and get all the appropriate permits. And that's, so that's really, you know, if you're regulated as manufacturing here, you have to go to DEC. You have to work with the local community. You have to get all the appropriate permits.
Thank you. We have been joined by Assemblymember Keith Brown, and we will now hear from Assemblymember Kellis.
So I just had a few comments to get some things on the record. There's some comment, for example, about the health impacts of microplastics. Really important that people do a literature review on the peer-reviewed journal, but here's one really quickly. In vitro experiments have showed adverse health effects mainly by causing inflammation, oxidative stress, lipid metabolism disturbances, gut microbiome dysbiosis, and neurotoxicity, just to name a few. So I just wanted to get that on the record, that actually it has been documented, particularly in the context of PFAS, which is really high in plastics. So found in every organ of the body. The other thing I wanted to point out is when you shift from, you know, waste being considered waste to handling waste to manufacturing, it's significantly less regulation overall. And in the 24 states that it has happened in, significantly less regulation overall in comparison. So I just wanted to bring that out as well. Couple other points that I think are really important when you talk about recycled plastics being better for the environment, it's compared to virgin plastics. It's not a really good comparison if we're talking about reducing the overall plastics in the first place. So I just think those few things are really important. Couple questions then. What subsidies do advanced recycling facilities currently get?
I'm not aware of any.
So I have read some. I'd love to follow up with you to get that exact data because that's not my understanding. And what chemicals or toxic byproducts come from the process of advanced plastics recycling? And how are they disposed? I've seen a list, I'd love after this, a full list from you.
Sure.
But give us just a sense of those.
So I think it's important. Number one is, facilities are going to be managing what comes in the door. Because anything that they don't want becomes their problem. So first of all, they are looking at their suppliers of material and making sure that they aren't coming in with things that are going to be causing them challenges, right? Hazardous.
Is there any regulation on the toxins you can use? Or you can use whatever you want? Are there lists in any of these states on regulations of what chemicals you can use?
For an advanced recycling facility?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not aware of any. I reckon what they do is you have to have an air permit, right, that lines up. So let's take New York, for example. New York, I'm sure for manufacturers, has regulations of what can be admitted.
But in the states that it exists, are there lists of regulated restricted chemicals that can be used in any way for the chemical process?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Just last question. My understanding, when you look at this bill, there's a list of chemicals that can't be used that currently exist in plastics, that would not be allowed to be in any future plastics. So wouldn't that lead to all existing chemicals? Or are all existing plastics not be eligible for recycling, advanced recycling? And it would only be future ones?
Have to look at the list. I would say that, you know, again, it's very important to think about what any sort of additive or chemical does. Oftentimes, they have a very specific purpose. For example.
I mean, the chemicals that currently exist in existing plastics.
You're running out of time.
Yep, absolutely.
You are actually out of time.
Well, there you go. Well, we can follow up on that then.
Okay, yeah, happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Assemblymember Keith Brown.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So I really appreciate you being here on this little important topic. I am from Long Island, where our number one expert is solid waste, unfortunately. So I'm very interested in the comparative analysis. I was listening to the hearing on my way up, so I heard what everyone had said. But in particular, when it comes to what this bill proposes compared to what the four other states, what does this do, what does this bill do better? Where is there an omission? And compared with some of the other bills that are being proposed by other states, I'd like any of the panelists to answer that. So obviously, the four states are not consistent. I think the important thing that this bill does with regard to particularly the amendments is the waiver process. That's appreciated. I think we've acknowledged that that's helpful. We feel like we need to start from a goals perspective that is reasonable and based on some data that's actually New York-specific. In terms of other things that it does well, we do appreciate that there is a PRO organization and other proposals that we've seen. It is truly just, you know, the money flows to the state government. And we all know that there are budget crises on occasion, and money can disappear in the state budget. So we do appreciate that the funding will exist outside of the state budget. I think one of the key things in comparing to other states, and I think I mentioned it in my comments, we are really concerned about funding for disposal and that being an element of the funding mechanism. It was something we worked on in Maine. Originally, they included disposal in their legislation. It was one of the few successful amendments that we had to help change that program. But if you fund, you know, disposal, that's funding landfilling cost, you know, bluntly. And so our goal is really to try to use the funding mechanism. We appreciate there's some language in the proposals relative to a reasonable rate as the funding mechanism, but we want to make sure that it actually delivers on a way to help improve the system. So the reasonable rate language is appreciated.
I've already got to yell. Anybody really quick? Anybody else? Because I want to ask about advanced recycling. Is there an advanced recycling EPR program in Europe that's being used by the EU?
I'm not sure about EPR, but yeah, there are several advanced recycling facilities in Europe. Plastic Energy is a very prominent company that operates there.
And where are we in terms of New York and the United States compared to the European Union as far as EPR and advanced recycling?
In terms of EPR, most, I think most, if not all, European countries have some sort of EPR, so we're definitely behind there.
Okay.
Advanced recycling, I'd say we're kind of on par, maybe slightly behind.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. First of all, let me just say that I think it was raised that we don't want companies that have taken steps not to be given credit for that. And there is a lookback period in the bill so that we would acknowledge that steps have been taken towards goals. So I just don't want that left on the table, that that's not part of the bill. And I'm just wondering, are most of the brands that we are likely to see in New York, are they also sold in Canada across the border?
So first on the lookback period, in California, it's 10 years versus five years in the current bill. So I'd just encourage you to look at, I mean, California is pretty stringent, and then, you know, they have a 10-year lookback period. In terms of the brands that are sold, there are subtle differences between the brands that are sold, but the parent companies largely are the same, but there are differences between Canada and the United States market and certain preferences among consumers. The, most of the brands that we represent, and I don't speak for Greg necessarily, do operate in both countries. So as they've encouraged us to do, is try to look for the greatest amount of consistency with the Canadian programs. In particular, I think British Columbia is highlighted as a well-performing program. It is where producers have the most amount of control in the system, which is, you know.
But in Canada, you're to some extent exposed to an extended producer responsibility program.
Yeah, absolutely.
And how long has that been in place?
You have to look at each province, so it's not a national law. And I think Ontario might be the longest that's on the books. And I want to say they've been in place for over a decade, but they also weren't on packaging only. You know, their EPR program looked at other hard-to-manage materials, tires and those types of products, and then they put packaging in. So it's under a regulatory structure, and then they added packaging. So in terms of compliance in those programs, yes, our companies have been in compliance with those programs. I will say, putting statutory goals in law, in the operating statute, is not something we've seen done in Canada.
Thank you. I think that's that. I want to thank you for, and I'm sure there'll be continued conversations. I want to thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, our next panel, John Barto from the Empire State Forest Products Association and David Fisher from the New York Farm Bureau. Hello there. Thank you for joining us. And whenever you're ready, in any order, just please identify yourselves for the record and your name and your company, and we're all ears. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's David Fisher. I'm a dairy farmer in St. Lawrence County and serve as president of New York Farm Bureau. Kyle Wallach from our staff is here with me today. Thank you for the opportunity to look at this proposal. The current version of the proposed legislation to reduce packaging will have a stark impact on New York agriculture industry. As written, the legislation will create an entirely new statewide recycling dynamic, as you know, to shift the responsibility from private to the producers, including farms and agribusinesses that sell dairy, wine, cider, flowers, vegetables, nursery stock, and more. Many of the plastic materials this legislation seeks to restrict are used in dairy and meat food packaging. These packages were designed, engineered, and produced with the approval and guidance of FDA to minimize package size and waste, but also ensure package integrity so the products moving through the supply chain stay fresh and free from bacteria all the way to the consumer. Without proper packaging, we could see increased food loss and waste in the distribution system. Dairy co-ops are owned by the farmers, and any costs on supply side would be absorbed and pushed back down by reduced price to the farmer. And the majority of our milk in New York is sold through our co-ops, and our members own a majority of the plants. Also, there's a growing number of direct marketing in New York, and that's been encouraged by USDA. So there's a lot, a lot more than you would think just production. Wineries will be severely impacted as well because there's no current market for recycling glass wine bottles and no cost-effective method to sterilize and reuse. The proposal leaves open many questions regarding operational costs because farms and dairy cooperatives plan their budgets and crops several years in advance and have often contracts on those in advance. We believe legislation containing this complex level of change and upheaval to the current system, which severely impacts farms and the general business community, needs much more stakeholder input, as well as an impact study prior to legislation moving forward. Within this legislation, there's a lot of uncertainty and many questions regarding producer responsibility organizations, creations, overall costs, and how packaging from out of state will be handled. Additionally, we're concerned with the language of the proposal prohibiting farmers, agribusinesses, and other industries from increasing their costs to cover the costs of their new recycling responsibilities. This potentially may not only hurt farmers as well, but could be underserved. It could lower the value of SNAP benefits and impact people in need. Food access is important. Given the nature of farming and the reliability of our state on farms to produce nutritious food for all New Yorkers, we recommend a food systems study group before any legislation moves forward. And remember, farmers have been the king of sustainability. Through research, science, and use of technology, we produce more with less inputs every year. And food is different. And be careful how you make demands without investigation and a study of the unintended consequences to a sector of production, processing, distribution that nourishes your body every minute of every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John Barto, with the Empire State Forest Products Association. For over five years, we've consistently been putting forth a position that encourages practicality, collaboration, and effectiveness in addressing concerns regarding increased recycling and post-consumer materials. We're pleased to see the amended version of S. 4246, A. 5322, that non-packaging paper was excluded. We'd like to believe this was in recognition of the unique characteristics of paper regarding the need for high-quality printing papers, that paper has an incredibly high recovery and recycling rate at 68%, the fact that paper is not infinitely recyclable, and that paper and the role of paper in sustainable forest management in New York State. This also leads to our concern that any EPR program and mandate should be driven by a comprehensive needs assessment, which would inform rates, dates, post-consumer markets, reuse, and refillable requirements, since these vary considerably by product categories. In looking at EPR proposals before us, I'd like to highlight some of the impracticalities that we see. First, a lack of manufacturer and producer input. In the proposals before us, the producer responsibility organizations may have little or no producer or manufacturer input. In many instances, producers and manufacturers have some of the most knowledge about recycling and what their products are capable of doing, and the business models that they have that have already been in place achieving the rates that they've been able to accomplish. Second, unrealistic recycling and source reduction goals. Mandatory rates, states, and material reduction goals are not consistent with other states or based on successful product programs. And even though you do have some off-ramps that have been included in there, we think that there's a lot of variability amongst products that need to be considered. Third, unrealistic toxic chemical bans. Prohibitions of certain toxic chemical substances and materials leave no provision for de minimis chemical presence that reflect reality of widespread chemical presence in natural materials. We think the language unintentionally added for a specific purpose should also be included. Lastly, with respect to paper and paper products, they're the only covered material that has a net conservation and climate benefit. Our paper manufacturers and paper products and pulping materials are the only product that yields conservation and climate benefit through sustainable forest management that can occur. And if that doesn't incur in New York State, that's going to be deferred to some other state or some other country that has less of an environmental and climate benefit. So we would encourage that you address some of these impracticalities as we go forward, look to some of those benefits that we have. And we look forward to further discussion of this with you. Thank you, and I look forward to any questions that you might have. I look forward to any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your, your presence and your testimony. For the Farm Bureau, there is, within the bill, provisions that provide for the FDA requirements not to be, we can't, we can't change what FDA requirements are for food safety. So I'm just wondering what we didn't capture in that that you're concerned about.
I think it's the concern over reduction. And if we have to, how do you say you have to reduce something and there's, it's already been done, or it's the most efficient? And there's a lot of smaller farmers that market direct that have different options, too. But all of, the food safety part is all baked into that.
For very small farm operations, what's their usual level of sale? Are they primarily making sales over a million dollars?
Because that is... The diversity, the diversity of New York agriculture is unbelievable. You know, there's a lot of local direct marketers that maybe one spouse has an off-farm job to support a very small vegetable farm, and then...
This is specifically about the sales of the products. So I don't want people to think that if you're not generating sales of over a million dollars, sales of over a million dollars, this does not capture operators who are selling less than a million dollars.
I would say we would definitely have wineries that would be below that.
So, you know, I just...
And then it would not be uncommon...
The purpose of our communication is to make certain that what's in the bill is clear, both to you and also to the public, that we have put in a level that would, we think, accommodate many, not all, but many of the small operators in our state, who we depend upon, whom we respect, and who we in no way want to add any additional burden to. But we can continue to discuss that, and certainly anything that is required by the FDA for food safety cannot be undermined by the bill. John, could you just elaborate a little? First of all, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Could you just elaborate on what you said about there being a de minimis amount of a particular toxic chemical that you, that this bill doesn't allow for?
So there's a number of chemicals that are naturally occurring in the environment, and particularly in, you know, you'll find in wood products, you know, you'll see PFAs that are just ubiquitous in the environment. And depending where you draw those thresholds, you know, in the parts per trillion or whatnot, they could show up. We saw it with other chemicals when you did the Child Products Protection Act that was there, that if it's really, really low, it's just going to be naturally occurring that's out there. You'll see it in particularly recycled content, depending what, like that comes in. So depending where you pick that threshold. So we're looking at some de minimis level, very low, that's not, you know, going to present a public health problem, and then also a provision for intentionally added for a specific purpose. So that's what's there. I can get you more details on those exact thresholds or whatnot.
That would be very helpful.
Because there's just so many of these persistent chemicals that are out there that are at low, very low levels, but we're seeing the requirements of check it down to parts per trillions and whatnot. And one, it's very expensive, but two, you're just not going to, you're going to find so many trace elements that are out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for your testimony today, and thank you for the comments on de minimis. I was going to ask you about that, and I think that's a conversation worth taking up after this, just because we do know there is a naturally occurring amount of chemicals. David, a question for you, you know, first a comment, you know, that, that when we're trying to change, like, the overall system, we don't want to exempt subsystems because then we, then we're not fixing the system, but we want to, we want to make it workable for all segments. And we certainly don't want to hurt ag, and we know we've got a burgeoning cider, cider industry, and craft wine industry, and craft beer industry in New York. So I guess a question I would have for you, you know, Chair Glick mentioned we have this threshold of a million dollars. How do we find the sweet spot? Is, is the cutoff 2 million? Is it 3 million? Like, like, we, we, as I said, we want to be supportive of our, our local farmers and people who contribute to ag. We don't want to hurt the industry, but we want to, we want to keep, like, the big players in the system. So how do we define what that sweet spot is, what that cutoff is?
It's complicated. It's, we'll have to look at and have some more conversation. It's, you know, if you look at a million, that's not, you know, 10% of that, if you could make a 10% profit, you're at 100,000. That's not a, not an exceptional income if there's more than one family member involved. So I don't think that's a real high number, even though it might sound high, because margins are slim. And then the investment in infrastructure and all those things that's needed is really high. So it's hard, it's hard to get started and stay, you know, with, and that's why we've seen so many of these farms have gone from a commodity market, or go into Hunts Point, or wherever, very, very little produce out of New York goes into Hunts Point. It's because the margins are too low. If you go to Long Island, they've all gone direct marketing. That's why we have so many wineries. In the last 40 years, they figured out they couldn't make money growing grapes. They had to vertically integrate to survive in New York. And we're seeing more of that with, you know, beef and small dairy producers and others that, it's just, you know, it's hard in New York. It's hard to compete. Our wineries, how do, how do they compete against the Napa Valley? It's a challenge. All those things, so...
So I, I hear you're saying that a million sounds too low. So how do we find out what the sweet spot is? Do you go back to your members? Do we need more conversation? I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. We're just trying to find out what, what's going to work. We don't want, we don't want to let the big players off the hook, the industrial players. But on the other hand, we want to protect our, our small, our small actors.
Well, I think you need to look at that, because there's really no industrial growers in New York. It's all family businesses. You know, you might consider my family an industry, but, you know, we milk a lot of cows, we milk a lot of land...
Some of them have to be doing well. So we can't say everybody's out, everybody's making less than a million. So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking you is to work with us, you know, help us find where that sweet spot is so we can help you.
Right. Happy to continue the conversation.
All right, thank you.
Have a good answer today. Thanks.
Assemblymember Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. This is directed at you, John.
Okay.
In the paper industry. So I specifically have two paper mills in my district that make paper and ship all throughout the world.
Yep.
What, what impacts is this bill in its current form going to have on the paper industry specifically in New York, as well as what are the, how can we fix this? What...
So this bill, to the credit of the authors of the bill, there's one very positive thing in excluding non-packaging paper. So they took a recognition that there was value in recognizing the unique characteristics of paper, and particularly the need for high-quality printing papers. In that, that was a very positive step. They get impacted in a couple of ways after that. The reduction requirements with respect to the packaging that they use. So, so those mills use packaging to wrap their reams of paper in. They use cardboard to wrap the, package the reams of paper in it. They use plastic to wrap the pallets of paper, and they use pallets that go into that. So how do they reduce that? And to get to a 50% reduction rate means do we sell less paper and whatnot. There are the off-ramps, so how do they do that? And we're uncertain about that. So we commented on those types of provisions that are in there, because while the, the paper itself was excluded, they got impacted on that in that way. There is the fear, as you heard earlier, a number of people saying, no, paper should be brought in. So we were concerned. Then it brings a whole host of the breadth of concerns that actually come in on that. So we commented on that, should paper be brought back in. So, to the credit of the authors of the bill, that was good for that purpose. It was, now, the other side of the paper, those that aren't bringing, you know, the packaging side of the paper industry, we were commenting on behalf of them as well, because we have some of those members that are in there. So they would be impacted. But no, positive thing on this bill, the two mills that you have in your district, keeping them excluded is a significant component.
So is, and also, I'm unclear on, is there a way to distinguish products that have gone through the many iterations of recycling, which, you know, from our tours that I've seen, you know, the fiber that's being used is being recycled many times and used in different...
So that, again, another unique thing with paper, you heard one testifier earlier today say that, oh, if you could somehow keep contamination out, you can take high-quality printing paper and recycle it to back to high-quality printing paper, and that's technically impossible. Every time you recycle a piece of paper, it loses 14% of the fiber, i.e. the fibers get shortened, and that gets lost and degraded. So typically, you take high-quality paper, you recycle it, it makes a lesser quality paper, such as a newsprint, or a lesser quality printing paper, it gets recycled into a cardboard paper, it gets recycled into corrugated cardboard, it gets recycled into a personal hygiene product, it gets flushed down a toilet or put in a garbage can and disposed. So every paper can only be recycled five to seven times, and it's gone. Unlike other products that can be infinitely recycled, glass and aluminum and whatnot, paper constantly needs that new fiber entering the supply chain and to be constituted and rebuilt up. So the value of, quote, virgin fiber milk in the process. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll move to Senator Henchy.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you both for being here. A couple of questions for Dave and Farm Bureau. Thank you, guys. You know, I want to start off with, I'm incredibly supportive of this bill with the solid waste issue. We have to do better for the next generation, and for us, quite frankly. But we are also on the verge of a farm and a food crisis here in New York. And as we've heard, we don't have big commodity farms in New York State. We just don't. And I think the challenge that was playing out here is sales are different than revenue, and a million dollars in sales is very different than a million dollars in revenue. And for the farm bottom line, especially because they are price takers, they are not price setters, most of that money goes back into both payroll, taxes, and equipment. And so that is something I hope that we can, can look at, and I think we'll continue to work with Farm Bureau on what that threshold looks like. Something that we had heard earlier was about the brand owner being responsible for packaging, the idea of what that definition looks like. And to me, that feels slightly challenging in the farm space, because most of our farms are their brands. And so those that even seem like they're doing very well, Ronnie Brook Dairy Farm, we find in our stores, Hudson Valley Fresh, a co-op, a dairy co-op, big brands that are still struggling under the structure of agriculture today. And so my first question, David, is could you talk a little bit about the co-op structure and the margins that exist there so that we can get a better understanding of what that looks like?
Yeah, most, like, in the co-op structure, the farmer has equity in the co-op. So anything that goes through there, profits and losses come back to, to the farm. So not only are we paid, but it comes both ways. So if there's any more cost or any more work, I just met with a major co-op last week, and they said that one of their biggest challenges right now is margins are so thin trying to compete, because we're competing with world prices. And so if it gets out of whack, it comes from across the pond or wherever. California ships a lot of butter product into New York that gets transformed back into cream cheese that people don't know that. So we're competing with California regularly. But anything, like she said, the farmer owns the co-op, the co-op runs as a business, but what the farmer gets paid depends on what the profitability of the co-op...
So the farm will still, under the structure, it's still the farm, it's not kind of the big packaging company, it's still the farm directly that would, could be impacted, and just something that we have to kind of think through.
Right.
Quickly, for my second question, I thank the sponsors, too, for adding in the FDA exemption. That came from conversations that we have had with our farm producers. So thank you for that. I'm curious if, two, I'm out of time, so maybe I'll just say it out loud. But one, if that language is strong enough, but two, the mechanism for the waiver requiring basically the farms or the co-op to have to come back every year to do it, that might be something you want to look at.
Yeah, I think we'll do offline, just to the time. Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll now hear from Assemblymember Brian Manklo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, thank you for being here. One of my questions here is ag-related. I have Mott's applesauce in my district. It affects hundreds and hundreds of farmers right now. They produce a lot of applesauce in their little plastic cups, little plastic squeezable tubes that all the parents love to put in their kids' lunch. And my, my concern there is, all these products have plastic in them. Is that going to fall under them? Because a million dollars is nothing. It really isn't. It's tens of millions of dollars, because they produce tens of millions of cups that go out to, to every, every grocery store, every school, all across New York and, and the United States. Should we be thinking about making egg products exempt?
In a perfect world, that would probably be nice, but, you know, we all got to be part of the solution, too, so...
Well, absolutely. And I think technology will allow us to get there. Years ago, Mott's applesauce used to be packaged in glass containers, of course, many, many years ago. And now we could go back to that direction, but at the same time, I know in schools, you can't bring glass containers into the schools, you know. So we had the Mott situation that will affect many, many farmers. We have Fairlife coming into Monroe County, part of my district as well, a lot of packaging that is plastic. Can we come up with a workable solution that makes sure, that ensures that our producers won't be hurt? And if so, how do we do that?
Hopefully, we can continue these conversations and find a solution. It's not going to be easy, because if there's cost, it's got to go either to the consumer or back to the, to the farmer.
I, I believe that cost is one thing to look at, but at the same time, is it practically doable? I mean, how do you bring back a plastic cup full of applesauce that has six ounces of applesauce in it in a school setting? How do we do that recycling component to that? I just want to make sure that we don't hurt agriculture anymore in New York, and we are competing against Michigan, against the state of Washington, across the nation. We need to make sure this is part of the solution, and, and I thank you for being here today and being part of that solution for our producers.
Technology always gives us options, so hopefully we can have enough time and flexibility to get there.
And I'll look into the FDA component as well. I think that's a great component, and I, and I hope that it will help our producers. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Steck.
All right. Thanks again all for being here today. John, I was hoping that maybe you could talk a little bit about paper and what paper's meant here as far as the, I know it's a large part of our waste stream, and I know that non-packaging material, non-packaging paper is exempted in this bill, which I'm sure you're pleased with. But can you add a little bit more to what the paper industry, you know, is doing here as far as waste goes?
So, yeah, I mean, earlier you heard Mr. Vitale, as well as several others, talking about how paper is a significantly largest part of the waste stream, and that, and that is true. But what constantly amazes me, at least in New York State, that for 35 years, we've never been able to determine what percentage of paper is recovered and recycled. And we know that at the national average, 68% of paper last year was recovered and recycled. And since 1998, 63% of it's been done. That's higher than metal, aluminum, plastic, and glass. That's higher than metal, aluminum, plastic, and glass combined, and it's been that way for over a decade. So we've got to believe that New York is somewhere comparable to that average in there. And what's interesting is, like, it's 68% of the national average, 14% of the fibers are lost every time a paper is repulsed, and somewhere around 15% to 20% are in personal hygiene products, products that are just disposed of. So we're never going to get over 70% recovery and recycling. So we're hitting extremely high strides in paper recovery and recycling. And I think that's reflective, in part, why non-paper packaging was excluded in this bill. But it just baffles me why New York State can't find recovery and recycling rates across products that are out there. You know, in 30-plus years of solid waste management planning, hundreds of millions of dollars in reporting, and, you know, what's out there, and our municipalities and state government just haven't been able to do that. And somehow, we want the producers to magically spin a wand and say, oh, we'll tell you in the next year or two what that's going to be, and come up with off-ramps and whatnot. I think this has got to be a collaborative effort. Everybody's got a stake in the game here, everybody's got a responsibility from the state to municipalities to consumers, to producers and manufacturers here. So, you know, we'd like to see that shared responsibility come out in anything that we do here, and really start to get a handle on this reporting and data that's out there. So appreciate the question.
Thank you. And if I could, to Mr. Fisher and the Farm Bureau, welcome, it's great to see somebody from St. Lawrence County down here today. Yesterday, we were talking about the bottle bill, and one of the themes that came up there was the fact that there's been no substantial changes to the bottle bill, specifically to reimbursements to the collectors. So their revenue has been capped by state mandate, state law, for many, many years, and yet their costs have been increased over time, whether it's inflation or through other regulation that New York State has imposed on them, increases to the minimum wage, you name it. And so they're feeling a pinch, because their expenses are coming up against a hard cap, and they can't control that revenue. And what jumped off the page at me, the first comparison I thought of was the milk industry, our dairy farmers, and the fact that they're price takers, not price makers. Can you tell us about how many dairy farms there are in the state, and what the size of that industry is, and what increased, additional increased costs to the dairy farmer means to the dairy industry in New York?
Sure. If I remember right, let's go back, like, 2017, there was like 4,700 dairies in New York. A couple of years ago, it was down to 3,500, and I would bet by this end of this year, it'll be below 3,000. So we've lost a third of our dairy farmers in the last six years, I would say. And we're price takers, we're on world market-based, costs have gone up, we're getting this summer in that $17, $18 range. I got that 20 years ago, some of the time. So we gained some efficiencies in some regards, there's been a lot of consolidation, a lot of farms out of business, and a lot of empty barns and changes. And then if you're not really scaling, you're going to really struggle if you're not a direct marketer and trying to vertically integrate to get extra revenue out of that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Next, we'll hear from Assemblymember Smolyn.
Thank you. I appreciate the testimony of the agribusiness-related community in this regard as far as EPR goes. One of the things that we've been talking about here is, at what scale do you get the full effects of the law, and should there be a carve-out, and is there, you know, is there a responsible way to do that? Correct me if I'm wrong, for the Farm Bureau, but most, 99% of farms in New York State are classified as small businesses. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
And because they're small businesses, by definition, they don't have the corporate depth, the, you know, the entire line of what goes along with the responsibility that we're looking at, when you compare them to, say, the plastics industry, or the, you know, a variety of other sectors that have a different role and a different mission in New York State. So, you know, from my perspective, the mission of New York's farmers is to feed the people of New York State, and to do so in a safe, secure, you know, cost-competitive way. How can we help our farmers in particular to be able to adjust to something like EPR? And to follow that up, you know, one of the things that Mr. Barto talked about was a needs assessment. How would that look like, or what would that look like for your sector of the economy?
For mine or for the egg?
There's two questions there, so whoever wants to go first.
Sure, sure. No, I mean, I think, I think it's, for us, it would definitely point to some of the things that I think the authors recognize. You know, we made a really clear point when we were discussing the bill here about what's the unique characteristics of our sector, and we pointed out to some of those, and I think they took that into consideration in drafting the bill, and that was important. I think what needs to happen more so across it is, what does this all mean, and what are the numbers? You're going to, each individual covered product has unique needs that are going to be addressed, you know? So what's the recovery and recycling rates of plastics versus aluminum versus glass and going on? What are the requirements if you're going to do reductions, and what are you going to do if you refill and reuse? Every product's going to have unique characteristics, and we think that needs assessment needs to do it, so that you can design a program. It's one thing to sit there and say, all right, let's have 50% reductions, you know, by X date, and those can be aspirational, and the bill does, in some cases, put off-ramps or eco-modulation in, but I think you could design much more accurate targets to be product-specific. And that's past what New York has done, is designed EPR proposals on product-specific categories, be it for batteries, or mattresses, or carpeting, or whatnot, and really try to do it. And that needs assessment could start to get us there.
If I could just quick, we need research and development. You know, we have a great land grant at Cornell, they do a lot of things, food science and packaging, and whoever can help us as the food industry learn about and develop new technologies is what we need support in.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. We will now hear from Assemblymember Kellis.
Thank you both for being here. So one of the comments I think I heard earlier was specific to PFAS, it's ubiquitous, and difficult then to target toxins, to take them out. And I'm curious, and for me, and certainly there are toxins that are naturally occurring, but from the list that's here and the conversation that I've heard and we've had, is it specifically focused on intentionally added chemicals that are man-made, PFAS being one of them, PFAS being bioaccumulated, of course, and highly toxic. If we continue to use it, it'll just continue to build up to a point where, for example, in Maine, you know, we have farmers who are going bankrupt because of its existence in their soil. So I just wanted to clarify if you're referring to...
I wasn't specifically trying to say PFAS intentionally added. I was just saying that the language in the legislation should look at, number one, looking at de minimis levels, you know, in other words, looking at, you know, EPA standards or Department of Health standards, that could say, what are the de minimis levels, de minimis levels that could be there that don't pose a public health threat? And secondly, language should be in there, that chemicals that are intentionally added for a specific purpose.
Right. So for PFAS, for example, there are no levels that are...
You might not have any intentional added for PFAS.
Right.
So I'm just clarifying, I didn't mean...
Okay. And do you sell in Canada?
I'm sorry.
Do you sell any products in Canada?
Our paper products are sold...
Right. So they have a national EPR, packaging EPR, so do you have a different practice there than you do here?
Some of our products don't get sold. If you can't, if Canada's requiring a recycled content, then no.
But for packaging, they have an EPR packaging?
Yes.
So all your products are sold there as well?
Some of our products are sold, yes.
I'd love to see a list of which ones you can't sell there, you don't sell because of their EPR packaging.
I'll take a look at that, I'd have to talk to some of our members.
And thank you for having the farm representation, I'd love to see the offline conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll hear from Assemblymember Iglio.
Hi, how are you? So coming from Long Island, and in a down year like this, where rain has affected crops and loss of crops and the harvest season in general, if EPR were in place right now the way it's written, how would that have affected our farmers, due to the season and the rain and the loss of crops and the ability to harvest?
The down year's going to be a down year, it doesn't matter what other things...
Yeah, yeah, well, anywhere in New York State, I guess, but Long Island, you know, with the grapes, and we have the strawberries, we have, I have farm stands, two farm stands within walking distance from my house. And in talking to the farmers, it's been a rough year for them. And if EPR were in place right now, how much more difficult would it make it for them, number one? And number two, do you think as the tax credits were offered for schools, for farmers to be able to supply produce and food to the schools, that that would be beneficial for local farmers to buy for hotels and what have you, to buy locally from farmers for tax credits to the hotels, rather than getting their cheese and their milk from other states?
I think most, well...
Any tax credits are good credits, right, in New York State?
Well, anything that incentivizes New York products to stay in New York is good and subsidizes, so we can't argue with that part.
Yeah. But the, if the EPR were in place today with the loss of crops, I mean, what would the farmers, I mean...
I don't...
They'd just be at a loss?
I think they'd be at a loss.
Where they are right now.
You know? Down there, where you have direct market and the need for local consumers, weekends need to be nice, and when they're not, on my farm, I pray for rain on the weekends, because I want to get work done during the week, but it's just different.
Yeah, it is. And I think tax credits are important for farmers, too, that are providing food and cheese and milk locally, mason jars being returned to farms, and some tax credits for that, for reuse of those products, for the heavy cream and for, you know, non-pasteurized milk, things of that nature. So I think that this bill is probably going to end up in the budget, and I'm hoping that the tax credits for the farmers go along with it, is my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Keith Brown.
Thank you, Chair. So I, like my colleague sitting next to me, is very concerned about the impact of this bill on our farmers, particularly looking at the increased cost, reduced food safety, and the cost-effective alternatives for food packaging, particularly meat and produce products. So as you sit here today, do you think that the current EPR bill gives you the tools and incentives to come up with alternative reusable, refillable products? If not, what does the bill need, and what does New York need to do to help you accomplish what you do, which is to supply the food for all of us?
I don't know if I'm enough of an expert to give a great answer, but we always need continued research and development, and new product packaging is, definitely needs to be something we always continue to look at, along with everything else that we do, along the lines of productivity, food safety, and all those other things.
Anything you want to add, from the paper point of view?
From the paper point of view, I mean, we're constantly looking at opportunities to better package our materials. I mean, there's not much more that we can do to reduce, you know, the weight of what's being out there. I mean, our packaging is paper that's wrapped around paper and corrugated cardboard that's wrapped around a box, that's our idea. If you reduce it too much more, you're probably putting a safety consideration into the people that handle that packaging as it's shipped to wherever it's going to go to. You've looked at pallet configurations that are out there, you use wind pallets, if you used paper pallets or other types of pallet materials, you run into a worker safety issue that's happening. So that reduction in weight raises worker safety issues.
So do you think that the current version, is it, is it too penalizing, or do you think it's workable to come up with some...
I think we've got to look harder at the off-ramps that have been put in there. It's not clear that worker safety issues would be taken into play, but that's our comments that we have on the bill that are meant about it.
Right, thank you.
Really start to play in.
Do you want to add to that?
I think we need to continue to look at it. No, I don't, I think we need more, we need to look more at the size of the operation and some of the workarounds on that, because it doesn't take a very big business to get to that. And when we're encouraging a lot of new business, we're encouraging new slaughterhouses, beef direct marketing, those small operations are going to be hard-pressed, and as they grow into that, when does it trigger, and those kinds of things.
The only thing I have a concern with is if you have it to be a growing commodity, and your weight is going up because you're growing, or is this bill going to penalize you if you have a growing commodity? If I'm selling more wine, or I'm selling more paper, my weight volume's going up, am I going to be told I still have to reduce?
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Just, well, we have...
I didn't realize EPR was so upsetting.
I had no idea that this was...
I know, I could get a little frustrated, but...
Well, it is the legislative office bill, so there could be other issues that are of concern, and apparently are. When you said that chemicals that might be added for a particular purpose, I was just wondering what that was, John.
So, no, it's the idea that if you're looking at a chemical that's, it might be detected in a product, and it's naturally, we're saying naturally occurring. What we're saying is, you're detecting a product, you want to know that that person, that manufacturer, added it for a specific purpose. So in other words, I added that to deter grease accumulating into the product, as like a PFAS would be, rather than it being found at a very low, undetectable level. So in other words, you're trying to say to the manufacturer, you added it for a specific purpose, fire retention, grease deferral, or whatnot, as opposed to it just became naturally occurring into the product. Like I said in the child detection, I think it was, I'm forgetting the chemical off the top of my head right now, no, let me get you some specific examples of that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, I would appreciate that. David, I know that, for many reasons, dairy farming is probably the single hardest aspect of farming, even though if you're growing crops, you're subject to the vagaries of the weather. But, and I know that we've lost dairy farms for lots of reasons, lots of people haven't gone into it, it's an aging population, and if you've got one cow, you might as well have 50, because you can't leave, you have to be there every day. But I'm wondering, having had some conversations with young farmers, it's, I'm wondering if there has been, in some aspects of farming, farming, any increase in the number of farms?
I think the really small farms, there's, if you look at the USDA census, there's a lot of, a lot of small farms. And a lot of them are people that may leave and come back to a rural community and, like I said, have an acre, start with an acre or two, and grow a little bit more, and eventually, you know...
Expand.
Like that. So that's probably the part that's increasing. I think we're seeing a lot of consolidation, so, yeah, there's a lot less, and if you look at the volume of milk, it really hasn't changed, and actually probably continues to grow generally a little bit, but there's a lot less people doing it. And so we got two extremes, and nobody in the middle.
Right. And as you said before, technology has helped. I went to a farm that had robots milking, which was fascinating. But, so most of the growth you think is in maybe growing commodities, vegetables, orchards, that sort of thing?
Orchards, probably not so much. There's a pretty big investment upfront in vineyards and orchards, takes a few years to get it established, so not so much. There's a bigger, probably, transition to empty dairy farms, or sometimes going to beef, or something like that. I think there's an increase, I know there's an increase in beef numbers in New York. There's some small ruminants, goats in sheep, a little bit more of that in certain places.
Distilleries.
But, yeah, a lot of people are getting into, you know, going to wineries, distilleries, breweries, that kind of stuff. Agritourism is growing quickly, just to try to keep people on the land.
Thanks very much.
One last question, not even a question, a comment, but certainly, Mr. Fisher, feel free to chime in or maybe come back to us. In addition to the million-dollar cutoff, which we said we're going to talk about more, whether that's insufficient, there's also an exemption for one ton of packaging or less. So for instance, I use the apple farmers in my district, they often sell to supermarkets just apples in a shopping bag. just apples in a shopping bag, so that may not equate to a ton, so they would be exempt. I, I think obviously something like, like milk and dairy products, that's a heavier package, and the more you sell, that gets to a ton. So, again, are, are we thinking a, a ton is sufficient? A ton may not be sufficient? Do, do you want to go back to your members to, to sort of weigh in, just like we are with the million calculation?
I would like to get back to you.
Okay.
And I'll just share one example I just heard last week, where a grower was sending stuff to a big-box store. What, what didn't sell, the grower had to take back and take care of the waste themselves. So, some of these, there's going to be creativity and pushback on both ends, and there's a lot of leverage, so, once again, it came back to the grower.
All right, but I, I would say in that example, like, EPR is not forcing any, anybody to go get their product back, so that was, that was like, unfortunately, a crappy deal with a big-box store.
Right.
But we're, we're not advocating that.
No, and I didn't mean you were, but just as an example of how hard marketing is.
Right, right, got it. All right, so we'll have further conversations. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your participation. The next panel is Matt Savillo, Manhattan Chair of New York City Solid Waste Advisory Board, Louis Dubuque, Vice President for the Northeast National Waste and Recycling Association, Kirsten Lawton, Director of Recycling and Reduction on Andaga County Resource Recovery Agency, New York Product Stewardship Council, and Kate Donovan from NRDC, the Northeast Regional Lead Environmental Health. By the time I finished, you were all here, I looked up and there you all were. Quick reminder, the lights will give you a green to go, a yellow, you've got a minute, and then hopefully we'll stop sometime around the red. Summarize lots of the things that you want to get out, you'll be able to get to us in the questioning. So, thank you for being here, and it's all yours, the floor is yours, name and title.
Do you want me to start? Okay. Hi, everyone, thanks for including me on this panel. I know maybe I was more appropriately placed on a panel earlier in the day, but thank you so much, Madam Chair and Senator Harkman, Chair Harkman, for having us and your support on this. So, my name is Kate Donovan, I'm the Northeast Regional Lead for Environmental Health at the Natural Resources Defense Council, and I'm here today in strong support of the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act. I'm going to go off-script a little bit here because I've been sitting through this whole entire day, and there seems to be a lot of points I've, I've been wanting to raise. I'm hearing a lot today that this is going to be complicated, it's going to be hard, there's economic uncertainty for consumers, and I think all of that is true, but I think we've done hard things before in the state, and we'll continue to do hard things, and the measures that are outlined in this bill are commensurate with the problems that we are currently facing, which, to be quite honest, are existential at this point in time, with climate change, human, the human health crisis, rising cancer rates, illness, and the list goes on. The Packaging Reduction and Recycling Act has the potential to do a lot of really important measures, including slash the packaging plastic pollution problem, expand recycling infrastructure and capabilities, and to incentivize more durable and easily recyclable products, spur development for renewables and refillable programs, which you probably should be talking about a little bit more, because that is part of the solutions to getting to this non-disposable space that we want to be in. But there are a couple of things that I would just want to reinforce our support for today. Of course, the bill rightly centers around the strong waste reduction targets and increased recycling rates. Front-end strategies are, are not, you know, front-end strategies are critical, and we cannot recycle our way out of the problem. Second is the hazardous chemicals, and we've talked a little bit about this today. NRDC in its latest scientific fact sheet calls for the immediate phase-out at the production and use of plastic polymers, chemical additives, additives, and types of plastic products that pose the greatest hazards. This bill does that, we're talking about the polyvinyl chloride, the polystyrene, PFAS, these are chemicals that are added to packaging currently, and they have no place in our, in our, in our worlds. They, they, they can leach into our products, and we are being exposed to these chemicals, not through the packaging in our home, but every aspect of our lives is being infiltrated by these chemicals. So, this bill takes the right step to do that. And lastly, we've heard a lot about chemical recycling today, and I think one of the points I'd like to make is we're, there, first of all, it is unestablished, and I think it's been pretty clear at the testimony today, it's not an established technology. There are 11 facility, facilities across the, across the US. NRDC wrote a very, like, detailed report, the transparency from these companies is very low. Our colleagues were a part of a, of facility tour of these, of one of these facilities, and the environmental advocate that was on the tour was not allowed to go into the facility. There was very low transparency until, so I, and to the final point of that, where we say that they should be regulated as manufacturing, and they have permits, and that all the environmental controls will be adequate, I'd like us to remember that a little place called, you know, St. Cobain in Huset Falls, man, just because it's a manufactured facility that is regulated by the DEC with environmental permits, does not mean that it would have dire environmental consequences for the community and for the residents. So, with that, I really appreciate being here today and happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kristen Lawton, a member of the New York Product Stewardship Council and Director of Recycling at OCRE, which is an award-winning recycling program with a 30-year track record in upstate New York. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As many folks have mentioned today, New York has too much waste, and our recycling rates are stagnant, and also our recycling funding system is unsustainable. We really need to incentivize those who produce packaging to reduce it while making it more recyclable to improve our recycling rates. In a time of extreme market volatility and increasing expenses, currently the burden to collect, sort, and market recyclables falls to local governments and taxpayers, not to the manufacturers that produce the packaging. This puts public funds at an unacceptable level of risk. Packaging, as we've heard, is becoming much more complex, and it is harder to recycle, placing an undue burden on municipalities. In Andaga County, where we serve 210,000 households, we have invested more than $5.6 million since 2019 in curbside recycling, yet our volumes are decreasing. It is getting more expensive for haulers to recycle, often is equal to or the same as throwing material out, so recycling is leaking out of our system. We need a law that shifts financial responsibility from municipalities to manufacturers, one that will encourage joint interest in recycling success, one like the effective EPR laws that you have already enacted for electronics, rechargeable batteries, paint, and other products. We need a law that will hold manufacturers responsible for end-of-life managing, management of the packaging they produce, and incentivize them to reduce packaging size while increasing the recyclability and recycled content of their packaging. This will help support a circular economy. We need to compel manufacturers to fund recycling education so that universal rules and product labeling can be established. This will help reform the patchwork of local recycling programs that we have throughout the state and correct widespread consumer confusion about what is actually recyclable. We need to require manufacturers to contribute to the expansion and modernization of recycling infrastructure so that programs can expand to underserved communities and handle more, as well as more complex types of packaging. The sorting technology is there, investment in infrastructure and job creation is what is needed. This sort of law must provide sustainable funding that covers the full cost of recycling, from public education, collection, sorting, to marketing. It needs to cover the cost of all recyclables, including paper, which is 65% of our recycling stream. It needs to ensure that all New Yorkers have access to good recycling programs, because we still have large, underserved sectors and programs that are inconsistent in service and quality. The New York recycling system desperately needs to be modernized with an EPR approach that improves recycling rates, reduces waste, and protects municipalities from the financial risks of unstable recycling markets. Local governments and the taxpayers of New York cannot wait any longer for this much-needed relief. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairs Glick and Harkman and committee members, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. I'm Lou Dubuque, I'm the Vice President for the Northeast Region for the National Waste and Recycling Association. New York State Chapter members operate in every community and employ over 24,000 New York residents. This includes an annual $1.4 billion payroll and responsibility for $6 billion in state revenues. I'm here today to discuss the extended producer legislative proposals that are currently making their way through both Houses of the Legislature. NWRA and our members continue to strongly believe that while EPR may assist New York's entire recycling system, we do not believe it will solve many of the problems negatively affecting statewide recycling rates, such as contamination, confusion over what materials can be recycled, and inadequate markets for recycled materials. Moreover, EPR that fails to acknowledge the importance of creating demand for recycled materials will simply add costs into an already stressed system without achieving net environmental benefits. Again, NWRA strongly believes that there are current, these current proposals fail to fully capture all the elements necessary for the implementation of a successful statement EPR program for packaging and paper products. Harmonizing the concept reflected in these legislative proposals will likely be a difficult task, given the complexities and economics of New York's recycling programs and the conflicting priorities of the stakeholders whose interests will be impacted by the implementation of statewide EPR program. However, we continue to emphasize that there is a simpler alternative to increase recycling rates and support local markets. Instead of establishing EPR programs run by producers, this solution will be setting post-consumer content standards for materials including plastics and paper packaging and containers. This standard will create more robust markets for materials recovered through existing recycling programs, thereby supporting their use for manufacturing into products and new products and packaging. For many years, legislative bodies have adopted bans on the sale of certain materials and set recycling and reuse goals, but very little has been done to create markets for recyclable materials. As a result, the cost of recycled materials remain high, and producers have little incentive to purchase and use recycled materials in their products when brand-new materials cost less. Strengthening end markets for recycling materials will encourage the recycling industry's ongoing plans to invest in new processing and collection infrastructure and innovation throughout the state. In fact, New Jersey and most recently Connecticut have signed this law, bills establishing post-consumer recycle content requirements for plastics and paper packaging. Adopting guidelines that mirror these states would jump-start demand for recycled materials throughout the entire region and could ultimately inspire nationwide recycle content standards while protecting New York's existing recycling programs and infrastructure. Thank you. Couple seconds later.
That's on, okay, good. Hi, I'm, thank you Chairs Harkman and Glick for holding this hearing today, and to the members of the committee, I really, really appreciate this opportunity to put on testimony today. I'm Matthew Savello, Chair of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, and Bronx Solid Waste Advisory Boards. My testimony today is primarily based on our comments to the DEC, the New York State Solid Waste Management Plan submitted to the DEC in August this year. This document was prepared and signed on by four New York City Solid Waste Advisory Boards and 44 organizations across the state. The Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act is one of the primary pieces of legislation we focus on in our comments document, and it provides a dual benefit of reducing waste volumes in recyclables like metal, glass, and paper, but also waste that is difficult to recycle, such as plastics, and in doing so, also reduces upstream greenhouse gas Consider, oh, no one's got, consider the New York State Climate Action Council's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. The CAC and the Nation Leading Climate Plan and resulting law set the goal of 40% reduction in statewide greenhouse gas emissions from 1990 levels by 20, by 2030, and 85% reduction from 1990 levels by 2050. The year 2030 is less than seven years away. But municipal solid waste is a good place to focus on to get us closer to the required targets. The EPA analyzed carbon emissions from the systems-based framework and determined that almost 50% of greenhouse gases can be mitigated by zero-waste programs, legislation, and incentives. Therefore, to achieve the goal of reducing carbon emissions by 50%, we must prioritize and implement legislation that creates programs, incentives with such all parts of the waste stream, and ensure that participation in these programs approaches 100%. The Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act is, is legislation that can significantly reduce waste volumes sent to landfills and incineration, and in the process reduce upstream greenhouse gas emissions, with the mechanisms that operate at the source of municipal solid waste by applying eco-modulation, encouraging recyclability, usability, and recycled content, and providing funding mechanisms for recycling infrastructure, which include collection. At yesterday's hearing, we mentioned Seneca Meadows landfill, and the approximately quarter of the material sent there are nearly a quarter of a million tons annually originates from New York City. The folks in Seneca Falls are just one of the many communities in New York State that live in proximity of landfill or incinerator, and also accepts New York City's waste. We know that this is, we know of this because the groups that worked on our DEC comments document and signed on to it represent Sullivan, Brookhaven, Greater Ravina, Coimans, Catskills, Onondaga, Red Siller, Seneca Lake, Sullivan, Warwick, Tompkins, Ulster, Westchester, Ithaca, Warren County, and Poughkeepsie, just to name a few. Overwhelmingly, they say enough is enough, and we need to get a handle on our trash. Packaging reduction and, yeah, I'm going to wrap it up, just, and I just, I just want to say one last thing, and that is we've watched this EPR, the thinking around EPR evolve over three legislative cycles, I believe, and I think it's, it's a lot better than it was when it started out, and I think we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you all very much, thanks for being here, thanks for your testimony. I have a couple questions for different members. So, Mr. Dubuque, you talk about post-consumer content goals in other states, this, this bill has them, and in fact, previous panels were complaining that they were too aggressive. So, I don't want to leave it out there that we're not doing that in, in this bill.
Completely understand that, we're, we're in support of that part of the bill, excuse me, the EPR part, not so much.
All right, and, and I guess, I'm, the, the next question, then the follow-up, is by reducing the amount of waste, which is the goal of this bill, and I'm not trying to be a Weisenheimer here, but your members generally get paid by the ton, so if we reduce the number of tons, your members would stand to potentially lose financially.
Our members would lose financially, yes. We, we agree with the goal that you're trying to accomplish, we don't think EPR is the way to do it, we're concerned that it's going to do damage to existing infrastructure and stifle innovation in, in our industry, that's our members' concerns.
Okay, no, I, I hear you. And then, and then to the concern about innovation and technology to Ms. Lawton, one of the things that, that we hear from people is that Europe is way ahead of us in terms of technology and equipment, and you were saying that funding is badly needed, and you're on the front lines of this. So, if funds start flowing to, to, to your agency and your responsibility, what are the types of things that you would do with that funding?
So, at OCRE, we work with a private MRF, a material recovering sorting facility, and they have been putting in millions of dollars of investment to further the optical sorting, the glass breaking systems, to help ensure that we can have a cleaner stream, and also there's more capture rate. So, it is out there, but it's extremely expensive, and so with additional funding, more sorting facilities could have this kind of equipment and could be doing a better job.
All right, thank you. I, I also wanted to say that we also put a provision in the bill because we know some of, some of, actually, your members have made great investments, we want to protect those contracts and those investments. So, we did put that in the bill.
We were very, we were very appreciative of that.
Okay, we just, we just want to make sure that we're cognizant, because you have made investments, and we, we want to respect that. So, I, I think, I think those are all the questions I have right here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you all. Kate, you, you said that we couldn't recycle our way out of this, but can we not increase what we're doing with recycling at this point? And where are you on things like we've heard? And where are you on things like we've heard, and I've seen the, the ads on TV from the plastics industry, that we can recycle plastic? I'm just wondering where you are.
Yeah, I mean, I think meaning is, you know, recycling isn't going to solve this problem completely, right? Our recycling rate is extremely low. Recycling rate for plastic is what, five, six percent? Extremely low. Even just recycling in general is not extremely high. I think what we're, what I'm trying to say too is that there is this place for certain plastics to be recycled. We, we talked about it, you talked about it. Ones and twos might be a space where you could easily recycle them, but all of the other, you know, numbers that are difficult to recycle, the problematic plastics that this bill addresses, I think that's one thing that hasn't really been touched on. You know, plastics that are pigmented, plastics that include carbon black, plastics that include the specific types of toxics are inherently difficult to recycle. So I don't think those are the types of, you know, looking to recycle those products, which would mainly go through a chemical recycling process, is not where we need to be focusing. I think that infrastructure, building infrastructure for more, more different traditional types of recycling is important. So I don't think there's any way to say that recycling is not an important part of this, this solution. It certainly is.
Kate, I, I think, Kirsten, you, you mentioned, you had a list of things that needed to be funded, and that included recycling education. Do we, it seems to me that kids in school are driving us very hard on doing a better job. But are you referring to the public being more aware of what they should be doing in recycling?
Sure. What I want to clarify is that public education does take many forms. It can be through school classrooms. At Okra, we have staff that go in and visit with schools and do presentations, but we also have invested quite a bit of money over the years in education to the general public, whether it's through brochures, newsletters, digital communications, advertising, because as you know, there are a lot of priorities out there, and recycling may not be everyone's first priority. But the more you put it in front of folks and you remind them what really truly should be recycled, the more effective your recycling program will be. So it's, it's about reminding and having the investment to make sure everyone understands what should be recycled.
And what can be and what can't.
So in, this is part of one of the things I talked about with the patchwork of recycling systems across the state. Depending on what markets are near you, depending on where you can market your materials, you may have different items accepted in certain areas and not in others, which is why it's really important to develop markets so that you have across the state a similar set of recycling rules. In Onondaga County, we might be doing something a little bit different than you're doing downstate or elsewhere. We focus on the shape of recyclables. We don't focus on the number because as some other folks talked about, that can be a little misleading. The number doesn't always indicate what should be recycled. I think, you know, we focus on the shapes of bottles, jugs, jars, and stackable dairy tubs when it comes to plastics. And then paper products, there's been a lot of education over the years to focus on what paper should be recycled. That's been, you know, paper recycling's been happening for 30-plus years, and I think the investment in entities like Okra and others across the state like us has really gone a long ways to ensure that paper is highly recycled.
Thanks. Matt, if you could provide us with the testimony that went to DC, that would be very helpful and we appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we're good on the Senate side.
Assemblymember Epstein.
Thank you, Chair Blick. And I really want to thank this panel for staying. I wondered to know, I think, Louis, you mentioned about education as a tool here, and I'm wondering if you found that education will improve recycling rates and improve the quality, because I know you said some of your members, you know, the contamination is really a problem in kind of what they're using, and where you've seen that be successful.
Absolutely. Education is vital. I'll just give you an example. We have a major issue right now with lithium ion batteries, and our, you know, people are putting them in, in the waste stream, they're putting it in the recycling systems. We've had examples of garbage trucks exploding on fire, MRFs. So it's, it's important that we get educated, we get our, get the public educated on, on what they need to do with these, with these products and what needs to go in the recycling stream and what doesn't, and, you know, that, that would solve a lot of our problems.
And with that, education, do you think we'd get a higher percentage of quality plastic to be recycled? Is that really, I mean, we're at 5%. Does education really get us there, or does the really core piece be like really reducing packaging and reducing waste?
If people understand, need to understand what goes in the recycling stream, what goes in the waste stream, that's going, like I said, it's going to solve a lot of our problems with this, yes.
So you think it'll solve a lot of our problems?
It'll help, yes. It'll definitely help.
Okay. And Kristin, do you think, also think that education will solve our problems? Like, I'm, I'm just concerned, honestly, that that's like a really limited solution when we have to reduce, reuse, and then recycle seems to be at the end of the equation.
Yeah, I, I do agree that education is essential. However, I think there are many other things that need to work into this solution, and if we can reduce the packaging at the source, we will certainly improve our recycling rates at the end of the day.
And I heard more earlier around clean chemical recycling and kind of how people feel about like the, the food wrappers, like is that even something that's achievable in New York to be able to get those wrappers out of the waste stream and send them to, you know, North Carolina? Is some, something, is that realistic for New Yorkers to do? Is that something that's even achievable and kind of what this panel feels about that?
I think it's almost an, it's probably an infrastructure question too, right? What do you, you're supposed to put those wrappers in your curbside? I don't know that the infrastructure municipalities could, could even handle that. I mean, a lot of, there is a lot of consumer-driven tape box, like, you know, I can collect those wrappers myself and then send them to the company. I actually did that with candy wrappers. But that takes a lot of effort on the consumer's part, and we're not all as motivated, you know.
So you think it's unrealistic?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that the current recycling infrastructure is capable of that. I think there are programs for individual consumers to send back certain materials to some, say, chemical recycling facility if they want to get rid of it. Needs to be scaled, scalable, which is, I think, difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your participation and for being here as we move through the day.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Much appreciated. And our final panel of the day, but we say last, but certainly not least, we really appreciate you staying until the end of the day. Kevin Dugan, New York State Restaurant Association, Lauren Sweeney, CEO of Deliver Zero, and Carol Dooliter, Doolittle, excuse me, Doolittle, Frontline Wine and the Wine Policy Institute. Forgive me. I knew I couldn't get through a second day without watching your name as well. Apologies. All right. Just a quick question. Is the New York Restaurant Association not here? All right. We'll see if we have their written testimony. Please, go ahead.
So thank, thank you for having me here today. My name is Lauren Sweeney, and I'm CEO of Deliver Zero. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on the importance of the Packaging Reduction and Recycling Infrastructure Act, Senate Bill S. 4246A, Assembly Bill A. 5322A. In order to keep global warming below the threshold set by the Paris Agreement, plastics production must be reduced by an estimated 75%. Plastics are not just a climate problem. They threaten human health and the natural environment in a way that exacerbates existing inequalities. I think we've all, hopefully all of us have come to that conclusion today. It's scientifically impossible to continue current levels of plastics production and packaging production while adequately addressing the harms created by single-use packaging. Such a feat would require magic, not science. The good news is that grounded, real-world packaging reduction solutions are already being implemented here in New York State, proving that reduction through reuse is possible. Several businesses that started in New York, including my own, offer a glimpse into a future in which reuse is the norm. My company makes it possible for businesses of all sizes, including many locally operated restaurants, but chains as big as Whole Foods, to offer their customers returnable, reusable packaging. Our tech integrates across points-of-sale systems and third-party delivery apps like DoorDash, Toast, Uber, and Chow Now, systems customers are already used to ordering through, and it establishes a clear communication channel with the customer. We use machine learning to track packaging and to create easy and efficient return options for customers. It is more cost-efficient, more resource-efficient, and less emissions-intensive to sanitize packaging and to reuse it than it is to recycle it. While recycling is part of the solution, recycling entails significant energy consumption, financial costs, and lost materials. This bill appropriately prioritizes reuse and passes the cost of recycling onto producers rather than taxpayers. As a taxpayer in New York, I don't like that I've been funding all of this. Focusing on the sanitization and reuse of packaging will decrease emissions, conserve resources, and create cost efficiencies. As a single working mom, I started my business to make reuse accessible to other time and resource-constrained people who need access to convenience but who also worry about the harm created by hard-to-avoid single-use packaging. In operating my business the last four years, I've seen firsthand that people want access to truly sustainable options. They're concerned about climate change and toxic chemicals. This is the stuff that comes up on the playground with my eight-year-old daughter. People talk about this stuff. People care. These bills acknowledge that short-term fixes for these problems undermine real solutions. Chemical or advanced recycling is not the answer. I think we've heard enough about how unscalable that is today, and it, it comes at a public health cost. Substituting plastics for other single-use materials is also not the answer. Turning discarded plastics into goat fuels or other energy sources is not the answer either. Reduction is an important answer. It's the most empathetic way forward, and it opens doors to new business models that already show real promise. New York State has the opportunity to pass the most meaningful packaging reduction bill in the United States to date. During the coming session, please pass these bills in their most impactful form without further delay. It's not hyperbolic to say our lives depend on it. Thank you for your leadership, Senator Harkman and Assemblywoman Blick.
Thank you.
Me? My turn. I'm Carol Doolittle. I'm testifying on behalf of the New York Wine Policy Institute, which represents the state's wine industry on policy issues. I urge you to read the written testimony because there's specific information in there that pertains to the current bills that we like. We appreciate this opportunity to comment on reducing packaging. New York wineries have no real option but to package our liquid product and non-horus decades-lasting material. We currently do so minimally. Since 2020, we've been working on potential solutions to wine-related packaging rates. We're involved with projects at Cornell and Alfred Universities, which will provide recommendations on the feasibility, consumer acceptance of reused wine bottles, and technical aspects. Tree Levin winery owner Peter Saltonstall is working with the professors at both universities. Two years ago, he found an extensive study in Catalonia on reusing, refilling wine bottles called Rewine. It's being reviewed by others in the state now. We're watching Conscious Container, the wash-refill bottle operation in California, and Ravino, a similar initiative in Oregon. Mr. Saltonstall spoke with the founders of Ravino. They're happy to share information with us, which people share with legislators, but what we do in New York is dependent on what happens with EPR and the bottle bill in the next legislative session. We urge you to not rush us, wineries, into a mandate without exploring what wineries are finding out about alternative practices, approaches that may provide better recycling results more cost-effectively. A private partner, private-public partnership with the New York State is absolutely necessary for it to develop and operate bottle wash and refill operations. Billsboro Winery on Seneca Lake is working with Facella on clean glass collection. This means separating wine bottles to be sold for recycling to make new jars and bottles. The Tompkins County Recycling and Materials Management's source-separated clean glass collection is very successful, according to Director Lee O'Reilly. They also do source-separated corrugated cardboard. It's amazing operation. If you haven't been there, you gotta go. Can each packaging material be treated separately in this? Glass wine bottles are refillable. The uses of crushed glass are many, making new jars and bottles, asphalt extender, fiberglass insulation, and more. Aluminum and metal are demanded by scrapyards. So cool they have markets. Paper and cardboard have been recycled for reuse by, since the 1950s. Plastic packaging for consumer convenience seems to be a serious waste problem. Manufacturers of recycling packaging must be held accountable for using virgin materials to produce new packaging. They should be required to invest in recycling what they've already produced and bear a cost within the PRO. It's interesting that we confuse manufacturers and producers. We're a producer, but we don't produce those packages. Consumers must be included in packaging reduction legislation. What are their responsibilities? If they don't recycle appropriately, their goals, the goals will not be reached. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Good to see you again, Laura. I, I guess I'm wondering how far you penetrated into the New York market, like how, how do people find you, and how do, have you found other partners? How hard is it for you to get other partners where they feel that refillable? I mean, I've heard a lot of people saying, oh, well, it's fine, but I can't get it here, I can't go there because of concerns over health concerns.
Yeah, I, I feel like there's two parts to that question, so I'll, I'll answer them in order. When we initially entered the market, we operated our, our own kind of zero-waste version of DoorDash, and there was a cohort of customers in Brooklyn where we started that were enthusiastic about that, but it became clear from a business perspective and from an environmental perspective, if we really want to solve the single-use packaging problem, we have to make reusable easily accessible at points-of-sale. So that's where we, I, I took over as CEO around that point. We started building integrations across the systems customers are already used to, like DoorDash, Uber Eats, et cetera. So we find customers by, they're already ordering from a certain restaurant, they're already shopping at Whole Foods, and they just see the reusable packaging option. And at present, we think it's best to position it as an option because the customer who actively engages in the option is most likely to return it, creating the best environmental outcome. It took a lot to get those stakeholders on board. It probably took us a year to get all of the, the contracts in place with different tech companies and with big supermarkets, and we're still pushing. We're still covering very little of the industry. It's been harder to get restaurant chains on board than one would expect, given that we could help them save money. I'll save that rant for another day and answer the second part. So there are dishwashing facilities that, I, I know that they've even recently welcomed city council members in New York City in for a tour to see how the process works. I would say more, even more sanitary than eating off of a fork at a restaurant. They run a really tight ship. I think we probably all, probably even in the last 10 days, have eaten off of a fork in a restaurant without thinking about it, so it is that sanitary. But i- in these dishwashing facilities, they're, they're using state-of-the-art technologies to make our packaging as good as new.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. So Carol, on, on the wine side, two things. One is just a comment. I remember many years ago in a different life, when I was in college, I spent a semester in Austria, and it was just a given that if you got a wine bottle, you returned it. You know, it, it wasn't an option, there was no disposing option. It was their possession and, and you gave it back to them. And so, you know, as we hear, we heard yesterday with beers and collecting, you know, I, I think those systems are growing. But the question I had for you, and, and you and I spoke about it a little bit offline, and, and you heard our, our exchange with the CEO, the, the, the Foreign Bureau, about what is the threshold for small vendors, craft wines? You know, we have the million dollars in there. We, we heard from, from Mr. Fisher that that was probably not sufficient. You know, what, what, do you have a sense on, on what that sweet spot might be?
Well, I do now, at least I have a sense on the, the volume. We're small, 2,000 to 3,000 cases a year, 24,000 bottles. We're well under $100,000, so I don't even know why I'm here, because I'd be exempt. One million exemption would be 7,000 cases, which is 84,000 bottles. They'd be 1,600 Well, I do now. At least I have a sense on the volume. We're small, 2,000 to 3,000 cases a year, 24,000 bottles. We're well under $100,000. So I don't even know why I'm here, because I'd be exempt. 1 million exemption would be 7,000 cases, which is 84,000 bottles. They'd be $1,680,000. $1,680,000 for income. That's, when you have a staff of 100, you know, and you're paying your taxes and excise taxes and sales taxes.
So to the point Senator Hinchey made, sales does not equate to profit or revenue. So, you know, is there, on behalf of your organization, is there a sweet spot you could recommend?
They're recommending 5 million, because 5 million is 40,000 cases. No, 5 million is 25,000 cases or 300,000 bottles. An average of $15 a bottle, which is wholesale and retail, you're looking at $4,500,000 income to that winery. 25,000 cases is not that much in terms of comparing to Gallo, what I told you earlier. What is it, 900 million bottles? And I guess what we're saying is the cost belong to a PRO to the smaller wineries would be far more expensive than Gallo shipping wine into New York State and thereby being held accountable. And I guess they would have to pay into somehow through the state or something, a PRO. It's, they'll have to raise their prices cents by cents or take, you know, a step back on it. And we'll have to raise our prices by quite a bit more in order to pay into the PRO. So probably 25,000 cases, which is gone, $4,500,000 to a winery in New York State. I can do some more research on it.
All right, we'll follow up, but that was helpful. That was helpful. And then in the last minute I have, Ms. Sweeney, since we have 60 seconds, I'd love to hear your rant on why you can't get chains involved, because to me, that's where the scale is. If we want to change the whole system, we got to get these chains involved.
They're waiting for policy is the really short answer. But we have a little bit more time than that. So I would say it's fundamentally an issue of it not mattering enough to people with decision-making power. This is starting to change, but earlier in the business, we'd run into, like, sustainability manager title. It's like basically a marketing role in a different title. And they had no decision-making power. They had no team. They had no budget. They had no product support. And they really want to work with us. And we run into some version of that in most of the chains. Most of the chains have very long email threads with them, where we make it abundantly clear that there are climate impacts to their packaging, when they're using compostables or single-use plastics or what have you. And they say, we're super interested in doing this. We love what you're doing so much. It's so important. Let's talk in, like, Q1 2030. Yeah, and that's where we end up with them. They all see this as inevitable, and what I've heard is that they're producing, like, they're getting ready for a world in which reuse is necessary. They're waiting for policy.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Epstein?
So Lauren, can you just walk me through this a little more? So let's say, you know, like, I walk out my door, I go to this place, Mama Fina, that's down the block from my house. So I can either physically walk in there, and they'll have a reusable package, or I'll use DoorDash. And how does it get from you to the store, and the store back to another store?
Yeah, so that's always a fun question to ask, because there's a few pathways. 82% of the time, customers will actually drop it off in person at a restaurant we work with. And they're often tacking that on to an existing errand. They're not running a separate errand to return the packaging. They're going to pick up food another time. They're walking past on the way to the subway. Where we operate out in Colorado, they're in the same shopping center, and they drop it off. So it's being just tacked on to their existing errands. The rest of the time, we're working with a couple of companies that do e-commerce returns. And we ask them, you know, you're doing pickups for Rent the Runway. You're doing pickups for Etsy sellers. Can you also pick up our stuff in this lower emissions, more efficient way? So that was our first step into leveraging tech for reverse logistics. There's even more fun stuff that we can do on the machine learning side. We have an API that any courier network could integrate with. Just ping our API, check, yes, they have reusable packaging out at this address. If yes, surface an option in a delivery app, in a text message. However, allowing the customer to return packaging at their door and then route the courier to the next drop point. We've proven a customer willingness to pay. Our revenue was actually kind of high in Q3 in a way that I questioned, and we saw that it was from just charging customers $3.99 for reverse logistics options. Customers are willing to tip extra, and couriers are not being paid for this empty leg right now. So this is also a way of allowing couriers to monetize their time differently. So there's all kinds of fun. Couriers are at our door every day. They're leaving empty-handed.
And so the stores are signing up, so they have two options for packaging in their restaurant, and they're going to either give you the reusable one or not give you the reusable, depending on your order request?
Yes. Customers opt in when they want reusable packaging, and the store will typically stock both reusable and single-use packaging right now.
And so, and I heard you talk to Senator Harkman about kind of the chain issue. But what's the barrier for the non-chains? Are the Chamber of Commerce's? Are there, like, local places that are being helpful or not being helpful?
There are a lot of people who really want to be helpful, but I think it's hard to sell someone else's product. We're starting to have larger-scale business conversations about different ways into restaurants. But there are a lot of well-meaning people that want to go pitch our product, and it's just hard. Our salespeople don't really run into major objections. They get the space constraint issue sometimes.
Very much want to, we're all good? I want to thank you all for participating. I'm sure that there are going to be some follow-up questions that we will have as we review the materials. And we look forward to continuing the conversation. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody who participated today and also yesterday. Two days of important testimony. It was very informative, and we want to thank everybody for being here. Thanks so much.